Youtube. Madam President, we are live.
Okay, alright, you continue with your question or answer.
I I just wanted to add that, you know, I did go to Sevitt and and saw that where even in the art class, um, there was a EA provided for one of the students and and um while the teacher went on to, um, you know, go around and help other students, but there was one specifically for for that student and I I just saw that in action and and Carlson was there and I thought that was pretty neat even for art.
Absolutely, we we do, um, again, according to the students' IEP, um, at the student, at the IEP, we definitely as a school, as an administrator and a teacher alongside me, we do advocate to have students with as much inclusion time as possible, even our very high needs student, because Judy Nelson has a high needs and intensive special education classroom, and there are about five students and there are two more upcoming from our pre-K program that um, that we strongly advocate to incorporate. They have um, they have time in their regular classroom, each of them have a have a homeroom, and they have um opportunities to go into the classroom during Core One instruction, that's that's regular grade level instruction with support, so um they do have an assistive person that goes with them and as well as all of the specials classes, um, art, uh PE, music, library, they assist them um each to all of those, um, all of our five boys right now, they all get assistance in those specials classrooms as well, as well as throughout the school day, because they're because of the and the intense needs that they have, they're also supported through um, like if we have a school assembly, they go, if we um every day for lunch and recess, they have all of that time because we strongly advocate for them to be included and to have those opportunities as well, just like any student.
Okay, one more comment. The um, now that I I know that with the five-year um planning and it was it was said that most of our buildings are at pretty much half capacity, and so I can imagine what the student um count is or the class size. So has that worked in our favor as far as more um, more time with students?
Well, the increased time, even the additional, because we used to start at eight o'clock, I mean even the additional fifteen minutes, like I had said, it it kind of plays into our attendance and the issues that we have, but for ninety, I mean, I have to look at this, again, I can hear Mr. Deswood in, what what what's in your control? What is the benefit? We have ninety-three, ninety-three percent of our students are in school and they are doing, you know, that additional time is being applied to them. So over over time, over the months, over the weeks, yes, we definitely hope to see that that um, those additional instructional minutes that they're being um that they're being given daily will definitely have um an impact on the the NAMASA scores and their overall grade, their over overall proficiency individually, not just school-wide data, but individual data as well through their through their da- um through their um individual grades and scores and everything that factors in throughout the year.
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to say that, I mean, with this, the two schools, elementary schools that we heard from, just slightly above ninety percent, when the average across the state of New Mexico is about sixty-eight or sixty-nine percent. So kudos to you all for doing what you're doing, even even to try to make up that difference again to those things that you cannot control, because it's been said that there has to be somebody at home that gets them up in the morning, feeds them, clothes them, gets them ready to school, gets them to school to make sure they're they're on time, and then when they come home, greets them, feeds them, make sure they do the homework, gets to bed on time, and then hit repeat. So with the challenge that you do have and with the high numbers that you have, again, kudos to you and your parents for for doing what you're doing. Again, the average across the state of New Mexico is about sixty-eight percent.
Absolutely, and so I I take that into consideration when I look at our our student population at Judy Nelson is um four seventy-eight, so ninety-three percent of our four seventy-eight is on time, on task, is there, is, you know, so I I do have to put all of those things in perspective. Um, but in 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 being really transparent and being honest with you, that is our biggest challenge is getting kids on in a consistent basis. Yes, sometimes they are family groups, but let's look at, let's look at the whole picture. Ninety-three percent of our students at Judy Nelson are are doing, and and families, not just students, but families are doing what needs to be done, and kudos to them too.
Was it was it your school, the one with the mischievous cows?
Yes, yes.
I thought that was really fun and I'm really glad that you guys posted that.
Yeah, it was it was great fun. It was a lot of work, but it was fun, yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Self.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment really quick about the six. The results that you have are impressive. Uh, so what is working there, I'm I'm wondering if maybe that could be replicated throughout the district, and with that, is it attributed to like the a strong of the teachers, was the correlation?
So for the longest time, I did, I did think that it-
Looking at the other report, like at the middle school, if only that would translate to the to middle school, that could the sixth grade goes to the middle school thing, that that the numbers are also impressive as well.
Absolutely, and this group, this group, this grade level not only outranks, I mean, we're not just, we're not just within the San Juan County, I mean, you look at the state averages as well, and and they are, we are outperforming them, and and these are um all across our category groups of students, and it's it's phenomenal, the work that they do. Um, my, I I congratulate my sixth grade team. Um, and if you look at them consistently, they they've kind of struggled as far as there's been a mix of people, so people have come and they have gone, they have come and they have gone, and um Mrs. Hawes, she's my my grade level chair, she's a phenomenal leader, she got rallies her group every year, but we um, we use, we utilize Agile Mind curriculum as far as math is concerned, whereas I know, and we've, I've had, and this was established way before, um as far as Mr. Carlson was um prin- uh the prin- the principal there at Judy Nelson, um it, they had been in incorporating this Agile Mind curriculum for years and years and years, so then when the district decided to go with mid-school math, we, Mr. Carlson, I think, was instrumental as well as um the grade level teachers in in providing enough, a- and the data speaks for itself too, is providing that this is the, i- i- it was a more meaningful approach as far as the way the the curriculum and how the content was being presented in in the way that it was presented, and so um, we were, we were fortunate enough to be able to keep Agile Mind um at Judy Nelson and were consistently consistently, year after year after year after year, seeing um this sort of data being being replicated every year, and it it really is to the to the um, to the success of of the teachers and the students as well, that they they have just made a concerted effort in in ensuring and and making sure that this curriculum is is taught in the way that it's supposed to be taught, and we're we're seeing really phenomenal results.
Right, thank you, and um in terms of the um, the late students, I don't know, have you been in touch with ICO in regards to those, so maybe that they can follow up with those um habitually late families, maybe there's other factors that are in at work in the-
Yes, we definitely, we'll we'll get in contact with them, and and we have definitely been uh partnering with certain um programs and departments in the district, so we definitely need to follow through with that, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, so with that, um, I was trying to get board member, my Twitter to ask this, but you said incentives for staff, um, is there something for students to, you know, improve that? Um, attendance, is, do we have funding for that, maybe through ICO or something else?
Yeah, Principal Carlson, do you have extra money for us?
It's in the building, buddy.
We we do, we we use a lot of our, some of our operational funds, our PTO is phenomenal in that they kind of, we kind of partner with them, they pay half, we pay half, you know, that that sort of thing, and yes, we do have incentives, we'll have like, with with the situation with uh our funding and whatnot, we've really had to get creative, but sometimes we'll have um a popcorn party and a uh with with glow sticks, and they, you know, those types of things that we have in in our library or in our music room, we'll have a dance party just to like, oh, these students have um had uh perfect attendance for the first quarter, and we do something fun um at school with them. When we when we start to see it on a lar- on a larger scale, um, we look at semesters, I'm I'm sorry, yeah, semester, so first semester, there was a movie, there was a movie incentive for those students that achieved first quarter, second quarter, and so we definitely do provide, um, our school purchased in the past, we have a a cotton candy machine, we have a popcorn machine, we have a snow cone machine, and then we get really creative with with those types of things and um and and do what we can to make it fun for them and and to acknowledge that they're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Um, Ojo, Amorillo. Sharon, can you put the presentation on? Or put it up?
So good evening, board members, Mr. Carlson and community members that we have here this evening, and of course, all of the colleagues. So I'm Phyllis Maestas, the new principal at Ojo Elementary, and as our first slide shows, capturing kids' hearts and loving them every day, would like to mention that we did have a hundred percent of our staff trained this year in the Capturing Kids' Hearts program, and I think that's made a huge difference from surveys that we've done with the staff and feedback that I've received, um, both from students and staff about building those relationships and focusing on their social emotional well-being as a priority and setting social contracts in the classroom, and um lightening the load on discipline referrals as well, so there's been a decrease in that. Next slide, so that's one of our highlights. More highlights that we have at Ojo, we had sixty science fair participants, which I was very impressed to walk into the gym, and all of the kids were very engaged, it was fun to see the support the teachers were giving them in their classrooms, um helping them print, we tried to provide any resources um throughout the school, such as their presentation boards, I know ICO sent us some extras, and we were scrambling, borrowed some from um Kirtland Elementary, but just making sure the kids all had access to the materials that they needed so they could all participate that wanted to take place in that, and we have some going to the district science fair participating this weekend. Um, our after-school tutoring has been a huge success. A matter of fact, at one point, Ms. um Cluth Clark had, the state was going to come and visit our site um as one of the schools, we spent a lot of time putting, um deciding who those kids would be for the high dosage tutoring, and I'll speak to some of that using the ninety-five percent materials that were purchased for us, um which we carried over to intervention groups in our building. Also, we have an April Family Night that's coming on board, where you have the Explorer Museum coming from Albuquerque, um Lisa Renner is having the Bitty Baby Food Farms come in, as in addition to our teachers setting up some science and math center activities for the families to come in and engage and support students with reading. Also, Ojo will be reapplying for the Community Schools Grant, and I just went with Lisa Renner and with Kirtland um Middle School, and I want to give a shout out to Kirtland Middle School, um, because they're doing phenomenal things with their community schools, so hopefully we will get that grant, and we will be looking for, to them for support because they've done a great job of rolling that out and working with them collaboratively because our school, our kids, of course, will feed into Kirtland Middle School, so. Next slide. So those are just some of the fun things that we have going on um and successes. What's working, again, providing those students the intense reading interventions using that ninety-five percent group, not only with um after-school tutoring and the high dosage tutoring, we're also seeing those kids make gains, we have, we've really focused on our K one-two, even having our kindergartners with the support of our reading interventionists, um walking to intervention, analyzing student data in professional learning communities, and making those informative decisions to meet the individual needs of our students. Next slide, which we feel has really contributed to the growth in reading, I'll show a couple of um slides here. Um, I just slipped that in there just for the board members, I'm sure you're familiar with the IStation data, that K two is reported out to the state for beginning of year, middle of year, and end of the year, um, and our teachers uh do progress monitoring monthly, and that is data that we look at consistently monthly. Um, district has been uh very supportive in um providing us with professional development. Um, we have, our person is coming again to Ojo this this week again, she was just at our site two weeks ago, met with the teachers individually, and we're really utilizing that in a program to catch some of those students that need individualized support using the computer program when the teacher is working with other students during intervention time. Next slide. So I don't know if you can move that up just a little bit, Sharon, on that slide, there we go. Thank you. So I really wanted to look at the comparison, we've really focused on the individual needs of the students, and I put up there the report for February, just because we had just recently looked at our February data and looking at where our students were in twenty twenty-four compared to where we are twenty twenty-five, um, because we really looked at this data at the beginning of the year and had some strong conversations of what was really not acceptable with the kids and the growth that we weren't really making, when I was analyzing the data myself, coming in as a new principal, and you, there were some challenges um with some of our scores, um not being where the students could be. So we really have worked hard to intervene. Um, just as some quick comparison, we had from K one from last year, that group of kindergartners, we had fifty-three percent of those students were in the red, meaning needing intense interventions, and now as first graders, there, we only have twenty-nine percent in the red, and we're hoping as we get to May, of course, the red will shrink and we will have more of the dark green, which is a little above grade level, the green, and then what we call that margarita green color that's in there, that they're kind of above the yellow, but we still know that they do need those interventions and support, so. And then from our first grade to second grade, we had fifty-four percent of those same students that are current second graders, that we had half of our students that were intense, um needing intense interventions, and so now we are at thirty-one percent. So of course, we feel like that we're meeting those areas for the level fours, um threes, sorry, five fours and threes, according to our ninety-day plan, that we're on track to the number, the percentage of students that we want at the end of the year for our K three students and including K five. We do have a challenge in our third grade growth um from the beginning, but we are working on that and have made some growth on the IMSA scores, which you will see. So next slide. Just to piggyback a little bit on that rate of improvement for our reading, um, what we look at, I really like to look at that, the rate of improvement for the individual students. Um, for the teachers, we go by class level, and then I sit with the teachers and we break it down by student, and we look at the individual students to see who we're going to focus on, and what our intervention, what we're going to do to focus on that child, like I asked them to focus on their two kids that aren't making the enough um improvement, what are we going to focus on for those two kids for this month, to really zone our focus in on individual students. So the high rate, moderate rate of improvement is where you really, is the growth that you want to see students make, but if you have the number of students, the scores in Level One, so you had like eighty students there at the beginning of the year, that's their beginning of the year score. So from grades one through, I'm sorry, K through five, because we have all of our students K through five take the assessment, and because it's just a great monitoring tool, we, they're making a high level of improvement, which is what we really want to see, especially if they're at a Level One, meaning they're needing that intense support, and Level Two, that moderate, what we want to see, but Level Three and Four. So we really, that high level improvement, I really give a shout out to the teachers and the work that they've committed to doing there. Our Level Five, we had um, I can't read the number there, six or seven students, maybe, six, okay, that were out there. Um, and that, because it hadn't been the focus, but of course, those are kids that are scoring higher, but yet we say they need to be having their interventions as well for um above-grade level work. Next slide. And this was our overall reading and math, just kind of gives you an idea of where we were from August and the progress they're making, it gives, the lines are showing a trend line of where you want to see that growth go. Um, the marks are either above the line or below the line, but the majority we have are um above the line or staying where they need to be, but they're all progressing. For our math, K one-two, of course, there's been some great growth with our first graders and our kindergartners. Second grade, I've looked at this data for many years, and that tends to stay stagnant. I'm not sure what that is, that we just don't always teach those concepts that they're tested on in that second grade, but right now, we are working and we added into our ninety-day plan for math, K one-two, um, we're going to be implementing number talks for our students, and that's just five to fifteen minutes of classroom conversation around crafted problems um that ask them to solve problems mentally, to really get those students talking. And as ELL students, what we really ask, I tell the teachers, it gives you also that in um opportunity for the kids to share what they're thinking and to talk about what their thinking is, so that they can build on the strategies of the way the kids are seeing things, because we're seeing a lot of kids that aren't able to do that fact fluency, that's a big complaint with those upper-grade teachers, they don't have those um facts that are memorized, but if kids start seeing it different ways to solve problems, and it's something simple as looking at dots and saying, okay, they hold the card, what did you see in your mind? But getting those think, kids to think mentally, we have to basically train the kids, so that's what we're trying to implement right now at K one-two, and hopefully over the years, we'll see that growth. I know I'm talking a lot about K one-two, but it's really been our focus this year, we haven't ignored those upper levels, but I felt coming in as a new principal that I really needed to start somewhere and make sure we were setting the foundation of things that we needed to maybe tweak and tighten up a bit. Next slide. And I'm sure you've been shown the proficiencies that our kids make in the IMSA data. Once again, we're really focusing on growth so that teachers aren't discouraged, and I've seen teachers feel a little more confident and confident in our students when we are focusing on the growth that students are making, and um the green bar shows the expected level of growth from where those students scored at the beginning of the year, and the above expected, the blue, which is great. Um, those orange lines are their below the expected, of course, we're hoping that will shrink as we get to the end of the year, and then of course, state assessments, but if this gives us a kind of a prediction of where our kids will score on the state assessment, um, I believe that we are on track to meet our goals and definitely score more students in the proficiency area than we were last year. And there, again, looking at the yellow and the near um, near expected level, those, once again, are kids that we're looking at, we've looked at the data from last year where they scored, that those kids are just like one or two points off, that really would have made a huge difference in them scoring proficient, so we know that um the work to be done. We had two teachers that moved up from third grade to fourth grade this year with their students, and they scored lower on, they were one of our lower-scoring grades last year on the state test, but we're looking for great things from them based on the growth that they're making this year as the fourth graders. Next slide. So attendance, of course, that's already been stated by two previous principals, definitely one of our challenges is the attendance, the tardies, the early checkouts. So what we have tried to implement this year is um rewarding students for perfect attendance, we have monthly celebrations, so, but the kids, in order to qualify, we say they can't have any tardies and they can't have early checkouts, and they have to be in school, you know, every day. So um this last month, I believe September, we had forty-nine, this last month for January was our highest number of fifty kids, which is about eighteen, nineteen percent of our school population, we would like it to be more, our goal is to get above twenty percent, because our schools probably would have, we're not at that ninety percent mark that these guys had, we're like eighty-eight, eighty-nine percent, but I'm hoping this will be an incentive for the kids. Um, what we're doing to improve that, of course, is I have an amazing counselor that has made calls, we've sent letters, um, we've had um contracts where I've had parents, we sit down, what are you going to do to help your kid? I have those conversations with the kid, with the parents, saying it's the kid's fault that won't get up. So having those conversations tends to help. Um, I had a, you catch those parents when you can as they're bringing them in, I think like we all do, as they're coming in late, they come in, they're a family bunch, if a sibling's not with them, I try to catch them in the morning, we're so-and-so, well, I'm glad you guys are here, and just trying to use a lot of that positive with them and get them there. I did catch parents, she called me about something else, and I said, well, we're so-and-so, the other daughter I knew wasn't in school, and said, well, I really need her here because she's the only child we haven't tested for access testing, getting that done. And I said, she said, well, she's with me in the car, I'm like, well, I really need her here because she's the only one, and we're going to get dinged for our school and district if we don't get her, you know, tested, she said, well, I'm down the road, I'll bring her. I'm like, okay, bring her on in, so. Um, don't know what the reason was, but I think just having those conversations with the parents, and um my goal is now to um make some of those calls myself, as I've done a few of those um habitual tardies or absences. But yes, so we celebrate with popcorn, snow cones, donuts, we've had dance parties, um, they each get a certificate, they've been rewarded with books, uh, but we really make it a big deal and announce every single name once a month on the intercom for them to come on down, and we're having a party, so the others are hoping. And we've even had kids that have come to me and the counselor, like, well, I didn't miss any school, my teacher said to check, so we have to go back, say, nope, you were gone on this day, or you were checked out early, remind your parents to have appointments later after school. So just communicating with the students, we have found that they communicate with their parents, so. Next slide. And I guess that's where I'm at. So just want to commend our students that made outstanding growth and the teachers that have committed to the work, we know that we have more work to be done, and we are getting there gradually. So, next slide, and I guess I'm ready for questions.
Question.
Go ahead.
Ms. Maestas, um, this is your first full year here, right?
Yes, sir.
If if I may ask, and if you can answer if you don't want to, it's your choice, what's the biggest difference that you've seen between Ojo and your previous school?
Well.
Educationally speaking.
Educationally speaking, I think one of the conversations and just being honest and transparent at the beginning of the year was, we had those conversations where I was presenting data, and I think the belief that the students can perform more than what they were, and I just have kind of went in with that and had some of those teachers respond to that, not all teachers, but um some that became discouraged, and, you know, we can make excuses all day for whatever reason, if they're not in school, we know that does affect them, we know, but it's kind of like what Dr. Tom was saying early earlier, what can we control? We can control what we do when they're in the building with us, and um still having high expectations, no matter what the circumstances are. And I've seen some really severe challenges that some of our students have faced, um, but it's nurturing those kids, giving them the love they needed, but at the same time, still holding them accountable when they're with us, and knowing that they're in a, and expressing that to the kids, and role modeling that for some of the teachers, that this is their safe environment, but so.
I I appreciate that answer, because a few months ago, we had a PhD candidate come in front of us and- come in front of us and present his information from his data that he collected. And one of the questions I had was, um, for him was, um, asking him if he recognized or saw the soft bigotry of low expectations. And he immediately, almost before I finished the comment, answered yes. And that it was prevalent. And so I appreciate the fact that you have the attitude that you do. And I, I'm not saying that nobody else does, but that needs be the prevailing attitude throughout this school district is believing in these kids and setting that high expectation for them to achieve. Because if we don't, if we just look at them and say, oh, they can't because they're A, B, C, and D, and we do a huge disservice to these kids and their education. Getting them to believe in themselves is, that's huge. And, and that starts with the leader in that building, with, with the educator standing in front of these kids believing in them as well. So I appreciate your answer to that and, and I know you and I have had a little slight conversation about some of the things that are done. But one of the other things I wanted to point out, certainly to the, um, elementary principals that we have here in the room tonight, that I had made a comment at the, um, conference and it kind of alludes to what I had said a little earlier about the schools and the principals and the superintendents knowing what's best. I was watching a report on Louisiana and how wonderful they're doing with their math and reading scores. And one of the things that was very simply stated was that they went back to the basics, especially with math. Wrote learning and flashcards. Department of Education sent out cases of flashcards because it works. And so many times we look for that magic elixir, New York engaged, I quite frankly, I mean that, again, I know people have their opinions about it, but still, the basic idea, the superintendent and I talked about this, about the use of flashcards. They're color coded for a reason, correct superintendent?
It's correct.
Absolutely, there's a science behind that as well. So those simple things, not every child in this world in second grade or third grade has that analytical mind to be able to see it and understand it innately. Most people, just like myself, it's got to be repetition over and over again. So again, for me, that's one of those things that the principals need to understand and that's why I'm a big supporter of differentiated instruction. They know their kids, but at the same time, you setting that expectation for these children in those classrooms, that is just as huge as well, so I appreciate your answer, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. So we just had, uh, one twentieth day count, how did that look at Oho?
I would have to look that up, let me see who's my attendance. Ninety-five point five percent, thank you for that good news. I mean, maybe because we bribed them with, we had our Valentine parties that day instead of on Thursday. So we said, you need to show up school, you need to be on time, so. That, that was our incentive, was to have our parties on Wednesday instead of waiting till Thursday. So they had to be at school, so.
That's good.
I'm glad to hear that number, thanks, Leandra.
And, and with that, um, I, I live up there, I live at Oho. And so, um, I know one of the big thing is, is the wifi. How is that?
I think we're getting that resolved right now, they've been working really hard on that. And I don't know who's here who can speak to the technology terminology, but we have a backup that's coming in and we had a cellular, I'm not sure what the name of it is. Oh, Starlink. But we will have something that will be working for us if it goes down, which I was really glad and appreciate that the money was spent for that because it's real important, because that's a huge frustration. I know I was out there in the fall and we went three or four days, I mean, no fault of anyone's, but, um, yeah, Starlink's tech and ours were trying to get together. And I know someone that had worked over Christmas break when they had the issues again from our district, trying to solve the problem and then finally when someone got with them, so. Yes, we do have backup and we actually have some extra cellular service because our concern was in case of an emergency, not having cellular service. So if you come to our building now, Mr. Carlson, Mr. Deswood, you can go to, at least in the office area and be able to pick up cellular service better. So that was just nice knowing in case of an emergency as well.
And when we used to have our, our meetings, we used to have it there in October and, you know, the wifi was bad, it was horrible. But, um, I like your, your comments to, to board member Montoya, um, about, you know, the students and how you work with them. I don't know, I, you know, I can understand the strict side of it, you know, and, and, um, and not allowing for excuses. Um, but on the other hand, um, you know, and it's only because I know what some, some of our students do face, even at that young age and, and, um, you know, my daughter used to, she, she befriended another girl. But she was caring for her grandma and she would administer shots, insulin shots for her and things like that. And, um, and she went to school at, oh, they would walk to school together. But, um, you know, and I wonder how many of our students are, are in those, you know, types of families and, and, um, and then, you know, I, I just think, yes, you're really going to have to know your students. And because we don't want to discourage them either and, um, but I think at the most part, you know, if they know they're going to be rewarded or nobody really likes to stand out, you know, and, and they're their own police, you know, where they, mom, I've got to get to, you know, let's go, you know, I'm going to be late, you know, or, you know, I, I think, um, I, I would say a lot of our students are like that. So, but I appreciate all your information and, and at the most, you know, I just didn't want, um, the schools to feel left out, you know, because we're always concentrating on graduation rates. And, and, um, it's been years since we've re, only, the only time we seem to look at, you know, if there's, um, changes in policy or was being mandated down from PED. So thank you for the information.
Absolutely, we appreciate it and we like to share the highlights of the great things that are going on as well, so.
Are there any other comments?
Yes. I particularly appreciated your expressing your feelings that, uh, uh, you have high expectations regardless of the struggles that the kids have, the things that they face. I'm aware that regardless of, of difficulties that individuals face, when, when there's great expectations of them, they overcome them, that is a character builder where those who don't have, um, those difficulties and obstacles to overcome don't get. And I appreciate your, your attitude that regardless, this is what's expected and, and kudos to you for that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I also commend the staff for really being engaging into the capturing kids' hearts. I really think that has supported some of the mindset. Um, that was great professional development that all of the staff that we received that really set that stage for us. So, um, there's been a lot of things in place, but thank you.
Thank you, are there any other questions? Okay, thank you so much for your part.
Thank you.
The last item is Kirkland Middle School.
Good evening, board members, Mr. Carlson, community and colleagues. My name is Cheryl Lynn Lee and I'm the principal at Kirkland Middle School, I'm a first year principal there at the school.
My name's Vanessa Hurley and I'm the assistant principal.
So we want to showcase, um.
Oh, can we change the slide, please?
Sure, okay, thank you.
Um, so we want to showcase some of the things, wonderful things that are happening at Kirkland Middle School and also the challenges that we are facing. Um, so what is working at KMS? We have, um, two preps for our teachers. Um, one is a professional learning, uh, PLC prep and then the other is a department prep. So our teachers are very, um, fortunate to have two different types of prep time, so, um, that gives them plenty of planning time.
It also allows us to go in and look at what they're doing in those PLCs and see what's working. Um, it also gives us an opportunity to look at their data that they have for that month um, and to see what is working for them and what they need support with from us.
Great, other things that are working are gifted and talented testing will begin this week. Um, we have a, um, a surge of gifted students that came in from last year thanks to Kate Morris and her team for, um, identifying those students. So we have, um, a first year gifted teacher in our building this year.
Um, so as Ms. Lee said, we're both new, um, to our position. Uh, so we do have an on-campus lead safety advisor, which has been a huge asset to our campus. Um, he assists us with, with searches and parent meetings, um, collaboration, he does the collaboration with law enforcement and with, uh, children, youth and family department.
Um, WEADA testing, we completed a hundred percent at KMS this past month. Um, and that is all due to the hard work of our new counselor, Katara Dan. And then we had support from Kate Morris and Marcel D. Ramos, who also came in to help, um, with testing. So thank you so much for that department.
Um, as previous principals have stated, we have a lot of our student population that goes through a lot of things. Um, they have certain issues that are going on at home and we are very fortunate to have a non-clinical social worker on our campus. Um, he provides support with memory books when students lose someone in their family. Um, he also provides a vape course for students who get in trouble for vaping on campus and, um, any other student support that is needed on campus.
One of the items that was not mentioned on the slide is we are offering after-school tutoring to support our students Monday through Thursday um, in any of the subject areas they need help with. Okay, so a couple of things that are new at KMS this year. Um, the first and most important part of this slide is that KMS came out of CSI status or comprehensive support and improvement status, so we're very proud of our teachers and our students um, for all the hard work they have done to get us out of that status. Um, we also are implementing a student council this year. We haven't had, um, a student council in I don't know how many years, so we are, we're, um, bringing that back and they should be ready to vote in their new members by the end of this month.
Um, we also have some new, um, extracurriculars for the kids to sign up for. Um, and these are CTE, um, involved. So the first one is, uh, we have some kiddos that are taking a course at the high school with, uh, Mr. Webster, so they're able to compete in Future Farmers of America. Um, we also have a robotics team and they have won airmanship, communication and coding awards. So they've been to two competitions already and they have another one coming up. We also have our Family Career and Community Leaders of America chapter that is affiliated and they are ready to go. So that's pretty exciting.
Um, as mentioned, with Kate Morris, we had an influx of gifted students and some of those students this year as seventh graders and, and of course, eighth graders, they were able to take ASU classes, um, that count as high school credits. Um, we also have a unity club and they just came back from their unity conference, um, from Phoenix last week. I'm sorry, um, also tonight was a very, um, special night at KMS. This was, um, at the BI-PAC tonight, we had, um, nineteen inductees and two are Junior National Honors Society. So we have brought that back, or not brought that back, but we have implemented that at Kirkland, um, middle school and we're excited about that program.
Another program that we have brought in for this semester is AR reading, um, so accelerated reading. Um, I don't know if y'all remember doing that when you were younger, but you get points and there's incentives and it's a lot of fun. It makes reading fun for the students. Uh, so, um, we will also have one school, one book that we will start in May. Um, so we're going to read Wonder as a campus, um, just to promote reading, uh, get the kids reading with their teachers. Those of us that love to read will, um, share our passion for reading.
Next slide, please. So one of the highlights at Kirkland Middle School is, um, being a community school. Our community school coordinator, Janice Denny, is amazing. She has brought so many resources to our school. Um, her work includes parent and school collaboration, rebuilding and earning the community's trust and fostering relationships. We have a site-based leadership team that meets twice a month. We have also brought in a lot of different, um, areas of community involvement. And we, in addition to, um, bringing in parents, we are doing, uh, we're prioritizing, prioritizing health and wellness, um, among staff members, students and of course, community. We are also enhancing attendance rates through our site-based leadership team because that's, um, where parents get to and students get to voice the changes that need to happen at KMS or would like to see, um, additional, um, programs and so forth.
Um, it also involves diverse stakeholders to strengthen our community ties. So we've partnered with the Kirkland Chamber of Commerce and, uh, we have also strengthened our, um, collaboration with the intercultural community outreach, um, at the district office. Uh, so some things that we've done through community schools are Zumba Night. Um, Janice has helped, uh, us secure the Renaissance program and curriculum for next, uh, school year through Save the Children. Uh, there's also an autism awareness support group that was created from the site-based leadership team. There were some parents that wanted to, um, just support each other and discuss their students' needs. Their students have become friends, so that's really cool because they don't have classes together necessarily, but they've found a community, um, to support each other. Uh, we've also had ear seeds and we will have ear seeds again for our staff and breathing exercises. So hopefully we can finish out the school year peacefully, right? Um, and there's a lot of, um, resources that Janice has for our students that include food, uh, clothing, hygiene items, um, when parents are in a bind, um, or when they finish their IEP or 504 meeting, they swing by the community school's room and they get the resources that they need.
So challenges that exist at KMS are behaviors. Um, as you know, vaping is, um, one of our biggest challenges. We have other behaviors that happen, um, some bullying. Um, but like I said, we do have LSA Rock there who is an amazing person to help us. We've also addressed the, um, vaping with, um, uh, an assembly presentation that was brought to our community, um, through the collaboration of Kirkland Central High School, Shiprock High School and then Kirkland Middle School. We all, um, on the same day, had the same presentation at all three schools to address the vaping, um, the vaping issues and, and hear a very powerful message about that.
And although they were high, uh, so we looked at our data from November when we were getting the slideshow together, um, they have been cut in half from November to now. Um, so again, through those, uh, resources and, uh, public speakers that we brought in, through the vape course that our non-clinical social worker provides, um, it's a two-day course that the kids take if they get caught with a vape pen. So, um.
So one of the things that I am, and this is not a big, um, I mean, it is a big issue is we don't have a lot of built-in time for professional development. As you know, we only had two days this school year to really plan and bring in quality PD. We, we still want to bring in more, um, PD, but it, our timeframe is limited. Um, so we're hoping that next year we'll get some extra time if possible to bring in more, um, professional development. to bring in more professional development. Next slide.
So our seventh, seventh grade data for the IMSA. There are growths in all areas. I know that's really tiny for you guys to see. So our IMSA scores have shown a growth in near-target and on-target for reading and mathematics for our seventh grade. And for the IMSA scores for language usage, there's growth in the near-target area.
Very similar for eighth grade. We have shown a growth in near-target and on-target for reading and mathematics in eighth grade. Our IMSA scores for language usage, also the growth is in the near-target range. So we are making growth. We're coming out of the need support category, which is the orange bar in the graph, and we are growing in the yellow and green from our beginning of year to middle of year. So some statistics really quickly. I know that's not in the slides, but we have, this past second quarter, we had 11 students who, for seventh and eighth grade combined, make straight A's. And then we have 41 students on the honor roll. Our attendance rate is between, it fluctuates between 89.1% and 91%.
Next slide, please. So what is not working? That was the question Peter gave us. We didn't want this to, I didn't want this to seem tacky, but that's just one of the questions we had. So involvement for data collection. We're having a little bit of, I guess, a little speed bump with willing participants. So we have families show up. They'll show up if y'all bring food. So that's, that's something that has worked really well. But we're still having a little bit of a speed bump with the willing participants. So also, the timeline of funding for community schools. For next year, we're just going to have to have a better timeline and collaborate with our finance department and the New Mexico PED and ourselves so that we have a clear understanding of when we are getting our funding for that.
And like she mentioned, the timeline, we, our POs got kicked back. There was things that were in the program manual for community schools that said we could buy those items, but when we submitted it to district, it got kicked back. So the district and the state and us all need to work together to make sure that we're, we're able to purchase the items that are, that are available through the, the available items that are listed in the program so that we can get what we need for our community schools. The next slide is what are we doing to improve outcomes? So because we are a community school, we are implementing the six key practices of community school. Sorry, it's a little blurry on this end. So the six key practices are integrated systems of support, expanded culturally enriched learning opportunities for students, powerful student and family engagement, collaborative leadership, shared power and voice, rigorous, community-connected classroom instruction. And the last key practice is cultural of belonging and safety and care.
So we're gonna continue to have those tailored programs to address specific needs of our students. We also are shifting that to have more student input and student voice. And at our last site-based leadership team meeting, the parents were actually the ones that requested that. So that was really cool. We were already leaning towards that with our SWIFT training that we're doing. So something that is coming up is the Just Move It. So you guys will see more information about that that's given out around the community. Also, we want to focus on core instruction and growth with students with disability and our English learning students. So in addition to this, we also have what we call the Bronco Best. So that is, it pertains to students doing kind things around the campus. Maybe they see a teacher that's carrying 100 bags. I usually have 100 bags with me. So a student might open the door for them or they see a piece of trash and they pick it up. They're doing their part around the campus. And so we have Bronco bucks and then we open our Bronco store on Fridays. So with that comes the attendance. We had two students who had perfect attendance. And so we were able to recognize our students with honor roll attendance at our student celebration last week. And then we had Snow Delicious come on campus. So we're gonna continue with those incentives and I will give it back to Principal Lee.
And next slide, please. Okay, so that's our presentation. We'll take questions. Be nice.
Questions? Go ahead.
Are you ready?
Yes.
No, I, I just want to commend you ladies for the work you guys are doing with your community schools because that really is the crux of the engagement with the families. And what was stated, I can't remember the young lady's name. That's your coordinator?
Janice Denny.
Yeah. Does an outstanding job. And, and I mean, I like talk, again, as you know, I know some of those people at the state, the community schools, and I've joined some of their meetings and I like to brag about what you guys are doing because you're doing exactly what you're supposed to be doing. You engage with the community, but now the community is turning around and engaging with you and asking you, what do you need? And that aspect of it, especially up here, is huge. So just keep doing what you're doing. And I, I know that there's a couple of other schools that are in the consideration. I think even B in Shiprock is, is looking at that as well. And I hope they do that because again, with the programs that they have and to be able to bring in the partners, community partners, to help these kids flourish, all it does is help develop that learning and that growth mindset for, for children to understand that the community around them is there for them, to help them. Again, as you heard me say before, you know, they talked about, people always talk about the whole child, but we're talking about the whole family and the whole community as well. And that can make a big difference for some of these kids, so thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
You can go.
Go ahead.
One observation I made is the fact that Principal and Vice are standing there. I think that's great. And just the way you gave your presentation, you know, together, you're accomplishing so much. And, and that's not to say, you know, the principals that, but it is, it really speaks volume then. That both of you can stand there and, and give a presentation and, and every, you know, what you just presented and, and I can just imagine what our, our community sees, the parents. And, and I think that's just, just great. And, and one thing that's concerning is the vaping that you talk about. You know, Gallup Board, I, I spent some time with, with two of their members and one area, and then it was also brought up during general session that they had visit the, the governor's and office. And in front of the governor, she was, she was there in attendance. They brought up their issues with cannabis. And, and, and then they, they also had, you know, concerns about vaping. And because I didn't know, but some of the pictures that they showed, showed me is very alarming because you have vaping that looks like flash drives. And I, and I think they, their presentation was given by law enforcement. But they took this to the governor and this information and she just flipped out, was the words used. She wouldn't hear it. And so, and, and I, I just want to address this later, you know, you know, for one of our meetings, but, and I just hope that doesn't become serious. But yes, all the information you presented, I, I, you know, again, I commend that both of you are standing there and so it's, it's not hard to believe and, and, and really take your words, you know, because what I see here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Husbands.
Go ahead.
One thing that has impressed me here tonight with the presentations, something that I heard over and over and over again in Santa Fe when I was there was coming out of COVID, coming off of COVID. And not one time here tonight, anybody say, well, we're behind because we're coming out of COVID. Not one of you tried to use that as an excuse. No, here is where we're at and you're way up here with attendance in every aspect. To me, it's commendable that you've come here and presented the good without comparing, or using as an excuse, coming off of COVID. Here we are, here's, here's what we're doing to, in our schools, to help the, the students. And I think that is remarkable that, that nobody has used that tonight as an excuse. Here we are in this community and this is what our kids are doing. And thank you for that. It shows tremendous integrity and responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a comment? No. Thank you so much. Thank you for the good information. It's been, I think, to all the presenters this evening, thank you for the, the job that you all are doing with our students. It shows, so appreciation, thanks.
Thank you, Principals.
Thank you for your time.
F, we're moving down to F, NMPED Student Wellness, Wellbeing and Competency Survey by Mr. Ventorina, Ms. Conley, and Mr. Deswood.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent Carlson, colleagues and community. We are here to present on the New Mexico Public Education Department, Student Wellbeing and Competency Survey by Panorama Education. Next slide, please. I'll go over the background and the purpose of this survey. So the background, it's formerly known as Youth Forward and Quality of Ed Survey. This survey has been conducted since 2008. I will also, sorry, I'll also reference the New Mexico Administrative Code, 61268 and 62917. So both of these utilize Panorama data. The purpose, provided by NMPED to help support districts in social, emotional learning, act on data and plan solutions at the school, classroom, and individual student levels, understand differences among student experiences to proactively create support structures and view the, and understand SEL data alongside academic behavior and attendance data to develop interventions that support the whole student. Next slide. So logistics. All students, grades three through 12, are required to take this survey unless the parent opted them out. Staff and families opt in to take the survey. This survey was given October 28th through November 29th, 2024. Data results were received mid-January 2025 and this was all online. So PED provides data inquiry and action planning workshops, which were held in December, playbook of SEL resources, and ongoing PED support. Next slide. So here are the response rates. 81% student completion, 375 family responses, 478 staff and teacher responses. The topics surveyed were school climate, school safety, well-being, educating all students, which were, was for teachers only, professional learning, barriers to engagement, and background questions. Next slide. So these numbers are gonna be the percent favorable. And the first one, grades three through five, we received 718 responses. So school climate came in at 58%. School safety, 56%. Grades six through 12, we, we received 2,118 responses. School climate was 37% favorable and school safety, 59%. Grades three through five, we received 739 responses for self-efficacy, 42%. Sense of belonging, 56%. Self-management, 58%. Grades six through 12, 2,168 responses. Self-efficacy, 36%. Sense of belonging, 42%. Self-management, 66%. Staff, 198 responses. Well-being came in at 68% favorable. School climate, 55%, professional learning, 50%. Teacher, we received 280 responses. Educating all students, 73%. Well-being, 68%. School climate, 64%. And professional learning, 55%. Family, 375 responses. Barriers to engagement, 71%. School climate, 61%. And school safety, 56%. Next steps. So Tier One and Two Support Results for Students and Groups. Schools were asked to respond to the following questions. What are strengths and areas for celebration? What are areas for growth? And how will schools remediate areas of concern? Next slide, please. So Panorama provides playback playbook resources and strategies. There's 908 resources and strategies available on the following topics: Attendance, behavior, climate, ELA, mathematics, and social, emotional learning. And we stand for questions. Don't have any questions?
I think one of the comments I got were, were to grade six through 12, the school kind of rated, the schools had a 2,000, 37%. That seems pretty concerning, very concerning to me. And that's where it looks like the junior high and also the high school. And then you jump down to grade six through 12, under self-efficacy, 36%. Is there, well, I guess I'd ask that next question of what, of what's going on with that, with that, with those data points? Is there something happening with the junior highs and also the high schools?
So you're...
So, uh your, can we get, sorry, I have my glasses. Slide. Six. So if you, the definition, of course, for self-efficacy would be. How much students believe they can succeed in achieving academic outcomes? So if we look at the responses, uh, is that the right one? Go up some more, please.
Right there.
Right there. Okay, so, um. Yeah, so e- even for third through fifth grade, it's a lot, it's quite a bit lower. Definitely, um. Probably. Really nailing down and working with students, uh helping them believe they can, they can achieve. You know, what, whether if it's academics, coming to school, um and, you know. Being. You know, making sure that our programs are, are there to support them, making sure that. That they know that uh the teachers will be there to support them. So it, I mean, it is low. I mean, it would, I guess we could look at. Look at it in comparison to how we, how students scored the previous, the previous year. Um, like Amy said, this was, this data has been collected now. I think it's the second or third year. Second year. So, yeah, I think that, that, that's, I guess, the best way I can. Explain it is low. I mean, it's definitely areas we can work on. Uh, go up to the previous slide, please. Okay, so school climate. So the school climate, the definition is perceptions of the overall social and learning climate of the school. So. Schools do not perceive or they're not, they're not perceiving the school as um. Physically or. As the overall social and learning environment, climate of the school as, as favorable. So definitely areas that we, we need to work on. Um, I think for the next steps, one of the slides was. I sent this data to principals. Um, each of them have logins to look at, to see what they can do. Um, the other thing too, I think self-efficacy. Um, and, and I think one of the other things to look at is the, the, the way the questions are worded. So as far as self-efficacy, a lot of times, like most adults, I don't even know what self-efficacy is. You know, it's that little. Voice in the, your head saying, oh, I can do this, right? So. Um, talking with students about that, like helping, raising awareness. Uh, and talking with them about self-talk, right? Positive self-talk. Um, and then, of course, school climate, uh that's definitely. Like i- if a student doesn't feel they're successful. So those two are kind of correlated together. So then if, if the student's not feeling like they can do that. Like if the, the school climate um is not there supporting them as well. Uh, then that's definitely something we need to look at and improve. Hope that answered your question.
Okay, Ms. Haspis.
So with, with, I, I guess that was just general. Um, survey and. And, and reading up on it, you know, there's um. Four different levels. And I guess that's kind of what you're talking about. Um, one being the master, the, the, the top one being the mastery level. And then the vicarious and then two others. So, um, how does this? How did the survey address those levels or did it? Or are we just looking for something general?
So, eh, the way the, the survey is set up is just one to get a, a baseline of where students are. And how they, how they perceive. I guess what they think about school, how they, if they're, if they feel safe in school. And their, their perception to see if they can accomplish tasks or accomplish, um, like finishing school. Things of that nature. So, um, so a, a lot of the programs like our social emotional learning like, uh. Like Ms. Myesa said, that's part of the reason why we have capturing kids' hearts. Uh, restorative practices, some of those programs that we purchased is because, like, whenever we looked at data, not just this data, but. Data like that we, that was, like a program that was presented last, last month, um, the DESA program. So then it helps us understand and break down those questions, why this is, is a lower percentage. So for example, here, here's one of the questions, uh related to self-efficacy. How sure are you that you can complete all schoolwork that is given to you? Um, and then another one is how complicated. When complicated ideas are discussed in class, how, uh, how sure are you that you can understand them? So then, like, it's broken down a little bit further. Here's one that's real, that was really low. How sure are you that you can do the hardest schoolwork that is given to you? That was at twenty-six percent. So this is, eh, there, there's quite a few questions in here that range. That one was the lowest at twenty-six percent, but some of them go as high as sixty-five percent. Um, but, but that's the thing, like, once, like, like the next steps is where, uh, principals took a look at this data. And then the conversations, we'll start to have conversations with them about how we could address some of these issues, um. Some of these questions so that, um, teachers and staff can support students.
So in terms of the data that was received, the, the information was received by school, correct? Cause I would assume that the, the school culture would. Be dependent on the school, the location, they would all differ and, and some, some. They would vary, I should say.
Yeah, so the, the information we presented was for the entire district. Uh, like I said, uh, each, I sent a, a link to this data and principals are, are, I sent it. I sent it them to review with their leadership teams as well. And then, um, I'll start have discuss, I'll start having discussions with them about the data and ways that we can support, um, our students.
Can I add one more thing, um, President? Good evening, everyone. Um, so one of the highlights that we have, um, actually with the Panorama surveys, we're getting. Um, significant, um, responses or, um, increase in, in participation of, in our school. So we really push it to our community, our staff, our students. To get a better sense or grasp of what our students, our teachers and our families feel about those certain questions. Um, and I'm proud to say that although there are areas that we have gone down in terms of the percentage, but. You know, the more per, uh, the more participations we get, the more feel or perceptions we can get as well. Although there are, um, points that we need to look at and as shared by. By Amy, this result was shared only mid-January and we're still, um, digesting and looking at. Some correlations that we can, uh, make out of it, like inferential, um, evaluation of what the data looks like. Um, and just in a, you know, broad, um, description. So we have Oho. Um, ninety-five percent in attendance rate, Kirtland Middle School is ninety-four, ninety-five percent. Kirtland Elementary is ninety-four percent and, and ninety-seven percent for, for Judy Nelson. So those, um, rates or those data points that we are trying to look at. Will be, um, you know, really looked at or will be evaluated and see how, how we can come up with. With strategies or techniques that we can, you know, implement at school. But bottom line. Um, the schools were aware of those instances or issues under our sections. That our parents or our teachers, even our staff can, can make a comment and those are some of the, um. Statements that we want to get from our teachers, like, uh, how they feel and how they. They really supported, um, through the schools and what the services that we provide.
Just to add a little bit more, so a few, few years ago, when I was a principal. Uh, Cognia had put data out like this. So the conversations, uh, with, within the school will then be. Okay, what can we do to bring this score up? What is it we can do to help our students? So that, uh, you know, we can increase school climate. So you start to look at the questions and like. Leandra said, you, you disaggregate the data and find these questions out and that's what Amy was saying, that there was, there's support. That we'll start to look at so that we can work with principals and then, uh, principals can work with their teacher teams because once. One of the big things that the principals, one of them said was, once we start to measure us, uh, measure this stuff. Like, I ha- I have this idea that, or this thought or quote, what gets measured gets done. So that now that we have this information, we can start to create action plans so that we can start to increase, uh, these, uh, this perception data.
Yes, uh, we have enough data, we could present for probably the next week. So, um, this is an overall view, um, and it does break it down by school.
Are there any other questions, comments?
And one point I'll make is, um, I was notified last week that we will be giving this, uh, survey again in April. So it'll be very interesting to compare and see the progress.
Thank you. I think it's really, this, yes, go ahead.
Superintendent. So who's the most important person in that building that creates that environment for that building?
It's, would be the principal. The most important person?
Most important person.
To create the environment.
That creates that environment.
Uh, depends on your point of view, but from my perspective, I was a building principal for many years. I believe it's the principal sets the tone.
Absolutely, we've said that before, from here about the board themselves. And indicative to that is asking the, the, uh, principals to come, tell us what they're doing. Because again, that's our responsibility is education of these kids. And so therefore by asking them to come and present that information. Hopefully will help to show that we do care about what they're doing and not focusing just on one area or one grade level. And, uh, I concur with you that, uh, it's my opinion that. It's a principal in that building that's gonna set that tone and tenor for that, for the rest of that building, for those teachers and those students as well. Just that it is the responsibility of the board through you, through your directors and the coordinators and down the line. To create that environment as well.
Thank you. I look forward to seeing the information, the data from April. Next, uh, item G, gifted, talented and creative program updates by Ms. Morris.
All right. Good evening, um, Mr. Carlson and, uh, board members. Sharon, if you'll, there, there we go. Um, so it's been, uh, since the fall that I gave you guys an update on the gifted and talented program. Um, we have lots of growth and so we wanted to share some of the exciting news with y'all. Sharon, next slide. Uh, so this year, um, we have split up the gifted referral, um, and universal screening process. So in the fall, uh, fall of twenty-four, we tested two hundred and ninety-eight. Uh, third grade students across the district. Um, and these were the results of the, uh, COGAT screener, the ones that moved on to next steps. Um, and so we had, uh, we locally norm and so each school had students that moved on to gifted and talented testing. Next slide. Uh, these were the number of students that took the full battery, um, which means they moved on to next steps. And they took the full cognitive abilities test. Uh, so we had forty-nine total take it. Uh, we had seventeen, uh, that qualified for gifted and talented and have been added to the rolls. Um, we're super excited about that. Uh, and we will also, uh, be adding between five and seven more. Um, based on artistry and leadership. In that process, uh, we have to collect a portfolio, uh, with some of their visual and, and, uh, things that they're working on. And so that process takes a little bit longer than just the test scores. But we had, uh, seventeen students from third grade that were added. Next slide. Uh, so we also had an extended referral window this year. Um, we had gifted referrals with our new, uh, program. Where parents, teachers and community members, uh, in correlation with, uh, Mr. Noble. Um, we actually put them on our website. They were able to access those referrals, um, from our website. Uh, and so we had over three hundred and fifty-five teachers, parents and community members. Refer students, uh, for the, the spring testing window. Um, so these are students K through two and, uh, grades four through eleven. Um, that are in the referral window because all third graders are screened. So we had thirty, three hundred and forty-four, uh, students, uh, that were referred. Um, we have two hundred and nineteen that were given permission to test, which we started today at the elementary school level. We, we, uh. Tested a hundred and twelve students today. And, uh, from that next step, we will have the top twenty percent of each school go forward with the full cognitive. Cognitive abilities test. Um, and so it's super exciting to see that growth and super exciting to hear students. I had a little second grader today. Go, I'm so excited to take this test. And I, she actually knew what she was gonna be taking and was like excited to be part of the program. Um, so it was really, it's been very, um, interesting to see the change in, in, uh. The, the community since, uh, taking over the program last, uh, January. Uh, another step that I did, um, as the gifted instructional coach was. Uh, because we had not had identification in our grades four through eight for over six years. I went through our IMESA data and referred any student that had scored advanced across the district. That totaled about thirty-four of those referrals. Um, so hopefully we, we will catch some of those kids that fell through the cracks. Um, the school gifted team, which is the new way of, uh, identifying gifted students. Um, we have met, uh, we did, uh, Kirtland area, Shiprock area and Newcombe area in the fall. Um, and then we did a district one for the third grade in January. All of those students that, um, qualify for gifted services will go through that team process. And then they'll be eligible for gifted individual education plans. All of our GIEPs will be completed, uh, for this school year, uh, on May first, twenty twenty-five. Next slide. So, uh, from twenty-two to twenty-three and twenty-three to twenty-four, there was no growth in the program. Um, we had ninety-one gifted students. Um, and then, uh, right now we're sitting at one oh six. Uh, and, uh, with projections, we'll be sitting around one forty-one by May. Um, along with our growing by two percent every year, um, the average for. Uh, gifted students in a school setting is ten percent nationally. And so right now we're sitting at three point six percent. By the end of this year, I look to be at five percent. And by the next year, we're looking at six percent. So we're, we're slowly, slowly making movement. Next slide. So, uh, this, I'm super excited about this. Um, so a caseload for a gifted teacher is thirty-five students. Um, and so, uh, we have, uh, currently eight, uh, positions around the district. Some are shared. At different schools, but, um, right now currently we have our, um, two thousand twenty-four numbers in blue. Um, and with our twenty-five, our, our twenty-five, twenty-six scores for next year. Uh, we're looking at being at, uh, over forty-five at KCHS. Um, and you can see there's, uh, a large increase, uh, for. Um and you can see there's uh a large increase uh for Shiprock High School and Newcombe High School. Along with our elementary schools as well. Next slide. Along with our gifted identification that we've been doing uh across the district, we also introduced uh two ASU programs. That we presented and and got approval for last summer. Uh the ASU program was a very, very successful program. And there was a lot of interest across the entire district. Um so KCHS, KMS had the largest, um but we had students uh at TBA, NHS. Um and we even had a fifth grader that accelerated into seventh and eighth grade math. Uh through the ASU program. Um and we're looking at full grade acceleration for him next year. Um ASU program enrollments for the spring, they went down just a tad. Uh some of the kids realized how rigorous the programs were and how uh complicated some of the. Taking an online class and, and doing those parts. Uh but uh there are some kids that. Went totally for it and are now taking two or three or four classes. Um in terms of gifted education in the state of New Mexico, we are under special education. Um and so we do have level one, two, three and four. Uh we have two students at uh KCHS that are now level four gifted education students. Which means they are spending more than half of their day in a gifted education setting with acceleration. Um and um curriculum compacting, which is awesome. Next slide. So another thing that we've gotten a big pat on the back from ASU on is we have an extremely. Uh amazing success rate in our district. Um when I brought this plan um to our district and to ASU, um I made the program. So that uh there would be a gifted teacher that was monitoring and helping those students through this process of online learning. So that they wouldn't feel alone. They would have a time during the, their school day to take these classes. And that has shown a very uh promising model for ASU and they are actually using us as one of their examples. For other school districts that are looking into their program. So we had a ninety-four percent success rate for completed courses by our students. Um I will say that across the board, I was just blown away about how well the students did. And how well they received um their, their classes and their partnership with their teachers from all over the United States through ASU prep.
Got a question?
Go ahead.
Do you know what the average is across the country as far as those participating?
Eighty-two point four percent.
Very good.
A lot of times, school districts just say, here, here's the class and that, that's it. Um so our model is, is much more hands-on.
I, I appreciate that because it's, you can liken that to some other of the. Programs even for, for teachers, while they'll have the program, they got them through, but basically it's just, you get it done, you get it done. But really the end result should be a successful student at the end of the day completing these classes. And actually learning, so I really appreciate that number, so thank you.
You're welcome. And we, we've been very happy. We had uh estimated about ten students per semester trying this new program out. The first semester we had forty-seven, uh the second semester we had forty-four. So it was quadruple the amount we thought would first go into this program. So it's been very successful so far. Next slide. So I, I got some quotes from um some of our students and our parents um to share with y'all about their. Uh student and parent experience with ASU. So one of the high school students uh said, ASU has allowed me to challenge myself academically with self-paced program that allows me to excel. It took me from failing many of my courses, and we're talking six out of seven. Uh to being engaged in my learning and wanting to learn more. Um ASU has turned me into a lifelong learner and made me want to learn. Uh that one always makes me tear up, sorry. Um we are so pleased uh that CCSD has partnered with ASU to give our child a head start on her college classes. We are thrilled that she can take courses that pertain to what she is interested in. Uh this is giving her a head start and a firm foundation. So that's some of our feedback that we've had. Next slide. We also had a program celebration. Uh we were supposed to come and present to you guys in November and I got COVID. And then the teacher, uh we were gonna come in December and she got sick, so. Um we're, we're, I wanted to share with y'all that uh CCSD gifted teachers attended the New Mexico Association of Gifted Fall Institute. Which is our state um uh organization on October twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. And Denise Piero uh from Judy Nelson won in Mags uh New Mexico Gifted Teacher of the Year. And so we were extremely proud of her and are very proud to have that designation um across the state. Next slide. And I stand for questions.
Any questions, comments from the board? Think you're doing a great job. Thank you so much. Yes, go ahead.
May I add something really quick?
Sure.
Kate forgot to mention, she's actually, you know, she's a, you're a board member, correct? For the national, I'll let you talk about it.
So I'm gonna be uh, uh actually two things, um with our Purdue partnership. I'm working with the professors at Purdue with our kids. We'll be presenting next month about the field trip for Jerry Camp. Um but I'll be presenting at the World Gifted Conference uh with uh the Purdue professors. Um talking about uh our cultural responsive curriculum that we're using in gifted education with Purdue University. Um and so I'll get to speak virtually. I'm not gonna go to Portugal, uh but I'll speak virtually at the world conference. And then also I was nominated as the uh network leader for social emotional learning for the National Association of Gifted Children.
Congratulations. Thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So um I saw of her, you're third grade. And um this is just something I, 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 I'm wondering if you um observed or. But when you start out with, you know, say example, ten gifted students in the third grade. Do you still have ten when they're in the middle school or high school?
Yes, so um there's a, in the state of New Mexico, one's gifted, always gifted. Um so we never retest as gifted. We don't tell a kid that they're gifted in third grade and then say. We retest them in sixth grade and say, you're no longer gifted. Uh that's not a thing in the gifted world. Um what happens is a lot of times we have students that go through the process of, of education. Um and one of the things, and I was a high school gifted teacher before I started doing this job. Um but uh one of the things that I was extremely passionate about and still am is uh gifted at the secondary level. Um there's a lot of places across the state of New Mexico that do not provide much services for gifted students. Um at the secondary level, um things have even been said that gifted doesn't happen at the secondary level. Um but in our district, I was very passionate about that because. Uh thirty percent of high school dropouts on average are either identified gifted students. Or students that were never identified gifted but probably could have qualified. And so I'm very passionate about that because I want every one of our students to engage in their curriculum and learn. Um and uh sometimes without that gifted case manager, that extra counselor, that extra person that can talk to them. Um they feel, they feel kind of out of place and it's really good to have that extra help. While they're going through the high school process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much for your important.
Comment.
Go ahead.
So I, I appreciate the acknowledgement where you said that there's a certain amount, a certain percentage, thirty percent. Um those kids get bored because they're not being challenged. And one of the things you said about, I think it was a fifth grader who's doing sixth to seventh grade math. It, it just makes me wonder how many more of these kids are just like that. If, and, and this little story I'm about to tell disgusts me because again. I talked about the South Big Trip Low Expectations a little earlier. One of the teachers, this was years ago. When I was actually working for the district. One of the teachers asked another colleague if they were challenging. I think at the time of fifth grade teacher asked the fourth grade teacher. If they were challenging the kids with uh fractions or even beginning to introduce algebra for those kids that could do it. And the fourth grade teacher responded and said, that's not my job. So take that one incident and look around the district or the state or this country. And see how many times it's happening.
So one of the, the, the gifted teachers, uh when I'm coaching and training them. Uh one of the things I have strongly encouraged and they have started to work on is going into the um grade level PLCs. And because they are the gifted ambassador. They are the person that is, is advocating for those students that are bored and need to move on. And need to curriculum compact and sometimes unfortunately, um in the state of New Mexico, we found out. Um in a House bill in two thousand and twenty-two, um that the majority of regular ed teachers. In the state of New Mexico have never received a gifted education class ever. Um and so i- any part of their, their uh degree program. And so uh it really starts kind of educating the teachers um and making them realize that differentiation. Whether it be on the high or low side, um can really help um those students that are in their classroom. Um and that's one of my big passions um when working with the gifted teachers and regular ed teachers is to make sure that they're starting to promote that. Within our schools.
It's that attentive human being that I talk about quite often, paying attention to the kids and realizing and understanding. Where those abilities are. And then again, when you see that, you challenge them. If they're a fifth grader and they can do fifth grade math and start challenging with six, if they can do that, then challenge with seventh. And just as you have noted, that, that's certainly possible because you have a student doing that, but again, how many more? If challenged would do the same.
And when, when, when testing at the lower levels, like in second and third grade, it is very fascinating to me. When I uh see a kid that has a hundred percent non-verbal percentile. Yet they're not passing their IMESA eye station tests. Um and so I'm, I'm looking into that disconnect um to see where that, that kind of difference in the data is. Um but we have some very, very, very bright students in our district.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to H, science textbook adoption update by Ms. Lee and Ms. Harret.
Alright, good evening, everybody. Ready to go home yet? Alright, beautiful. Thank you all for being here tonight. Good evening, board, school board members. Thank you all for being here, your time and your dedication. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. And I'm the instructional coordinator for secondary schools. I'll let my colleague introduce herself.
And I am the elementary coordinator.
Alright, so tonight we have science textbook adoption. We started this process last fall. And we want to give you an update and some of our recommendations. So go ahead and roll forward, Sharon. So today's presentation will assist in helping you all understand the science textbook adoption process. As well as learning how teachers, administration, students and parents were involved in the process. Knowing what science textbooks are recommended and the plans for implementation. And ultimately, school board approval of the science textbook material that's gonna be presented this evening for school year twenty-five, twenty-six. Alright, go ahead and roll forward. Alright, for our um science textbook adoption process, we do have a flow chart here and we broke it into five phases. Our first phase was preparation, which is always ongoing. And you'll also see that evaluation is also always ongoing. Our preparation included um looking at the standards and making sure we had some teachers do the pacing guides and, and such. Um in the past, we also assessed our current science curriculum and identity, identified areas for improvement. We do know that some of the southern schools did have wifi uh issues and so. A lot of the teachers did voice their opinion on that techni- technological issues with the science textbooks for currently. We also are looking at the budget and planning and allocate funds for the science material. Uh phase two, our adoption cycle. Our science textbook adoption is every six years. However, PED can decide if that's gonna be sooner. Um so basically it's every six years. Uh PED does do an announcement. Publishers submit their proposals for their content. The state review committee does comprise, is comprised of educators, content experts and community members to evaluate the submitted material. Uh this year we had five different publishers submit. We had Savas Learning, HMH. Twig Science and Learning, uh McGraw-Hill and. Who was the fifth one? STEM Scopes. Thanks, Kate. Um so there are regional review centers. We also did this locally for our schools in the Kirtland. Shiprock and Newcombe areas. So our district selection here in phase three. This is usually following state review and they also vet the um publishers. Uh so the district CNI team confirmed with the publishers. We got five different publishers. And we set up an adoption plan and we communicated with the principals. Teacher input at Science PLC. We also went on the road. We did a little road show, Jerry and I. And we took the textbooks in two district vehicles back and forth and forth and back. Uh and we stopped at um Newcombe Middle School. We were set it up, we were set up at Bon Wilson and we're also set up at Shiprock High School. Um this involved um the students and community in that we presented or we were there at the family engagement night for the, for the winter. And we also had a teacher survey via QR code so that teachers were able to um vote for their, their best selection. And so tonight is school board approval. As we move forward and with your approval, the adoptions, uh. The science textbook adoption, we look at implementation. We have our science PLCs for secondary as well as elementary to review pacing guides and alignment to material. We also have district purchase and distribute the tech, science textbooks to the schools. Um and also teachers will receive PD on effective use of material. Many of these publishers do have a back-to-school um free PD. And so we're looking at doing those before the summer because teachers have said that some are engaged with summer school. And some have like summer vacays and things that they're gonna be doing. So we really wanna start this implementation process um in this school year. We also have designated pacing guide times on um Fridays of the, each month and we have ongoing science PLCs. And our phase five, we have evaluation and of course, this is always ongoing. So district and teachers evaluate the effectiveness of the new textbooks and provide feedback. And um we also will have ongoing professional development as needed for grades K through twelve. Okay, um any questions about the science process thus far? Okay, Sharon, go ahead and roll forward. Okay, with the science textbook recommendations, we have K through sixth grades. We have Twig Science.
Yes, the Twig Science met all the criteria went under HQIM with New Mexico PED. Um the big component that really sold the Twig Science was CLRI. CLRI is built within the program and that's what the teachers um really looked at. Because they were struggling on finding components that really addressed the CLRI. So Twig was the one that um won out and the teachers really came in. And looked at all the components, what it was available, the online access. But um mainly really what caught their eye was the component of how they would address the CLRI within the program. Cultural linguistics. So it really um, the program. In in beds, a lot of our like ELL, our students, understanding the certain components. So they make a a cultural connection with science. So teachers are able to use the materials that is more friendly, so they're not pulling out from other areas. They're using the program that's aligned to what um, the population of what like vocabulary um, content. Seeing if it's relevant to the students. So that's when we talk about CLRI. We're really, they're really looking to find something that is sequential and is aligned to where their outcomes need to be. And uh, Twig was the one that came all the way across, was one of very few programs that had the checkmark of high rating. Now, like um, Ms. Lee was talking about, these programs are embedded within districts across the the state of New Mexico. So they're they're um, piloted in schools and the teachers are the ones that are given a rubric to follow. And they score according to what the content that they're looking for. So and one of that content that they hit big even with social studies was CLRI because of the Yasi Martinez.
So I'm sure somewhere in there, there's eclipse. How would, how would they?
Well. The eclipse, there wasn't anything mentioned with the eclipse in that. But our teachers do know with um, Dr. Belinda Brigade, uh, Begay and her crew. What they do is is that they give with the principals, they give the ahead of time what you can and cannot do, especially when it comes to Navajo culture. And our beliefs. So they're ready and already prepped and to not to follow the guidelines of what ICO gives out. So there is a cultural aspect that they follow, but it's not embedded in in writing. Because the whole program is embedded for all CLRI, including Hispanics and other Native American cultures. They cover it as Native American cultures and not just specifically Navajo.
And then McGraw-Hill is um, the seventh through eighth grade, so TBA and Nuka Middle School as well as Kirtland Mid School. This was the highest rating for um, science was in McGraw-Hill. And this is the integrated science is the uh, avenue we're going to go with um, for McGraw-Hill. With regards to the nine to twelve grades, it's Savas Learning. Savas Learning is key in the AP Science courses and this is what was really influential. Decision maker amongst the department heads for science. It was because they had a really strong AP and a partnership with Pearson Learning. In regards to creating those AP textbooks. Alright, um, Sharon, if you have, you can roll forward if you need to. Or please roll forward, Sharon.
Last slide.
Alright, yep. And any other questions?
Any questions or comments? In. So we're in the last phase, basically.
Yeah, and it's just. Like your approval so that we can move forward with the implementation and the back to school training, professional development for teachers. And then we'll start getting the book numbers, all that stuff for budget allocations and so we can see where we're at with for each schools.
Alright, thank you. Thank you so much.
Have a lovely evening. Safe journeys home.
Um, next item, I, Community Schools Update by Ms. Renner.
At present? I don't see that on the consent agenda to approve that.
The textbooks.
Say it again? Just want to make that sure.
Make sure it's on the consent agenda for next meeting.
Do we have access to those books?
Can we get, can you bring at the next meeting, bring copies of the books?
Before.
Or before, okay, for the retreat on February twenty-eighth, we'll be here. So, thank you. The.
All three?
All three? That would be. That would work. Thank you.
You ready? Okay, sorry. Good evening, I'm Lisa Renner. Um, it's good to see you, School Board Superintendent and colleagues and community members. Um, I'm here to talk tonight about community schools. I work with um, social workers, non-clinical social workers. Parents as teachers, liaisons and community schools. Um, and I have a presentation that will come up. Um, the first slide is about the community school coordinator, which is an important role in community schools. That's the. Person Janice that KMS was talking about. KMS right now is our only fully funded community school. The um, New Mexico Public Education Department. And at that school, they have Janice who is doing amazing work. And so the goal is to have. More schools next year that are funded through the PED. Mid-April, that is when the um, grant opens up from New Mexico PED. I've been talking with Eva B. Stokely. Uh, Jeannie Lewis would like to apply. I'm supposed to go there at six in the morning for their um, leadership team meeting. I'm not usually out this late. On a school night, so I don't know if I'll make it tomorrow, but um, I'm going to start joining their leadership team meeting, which starts at six forty-five in the morning, but um. Also Ojo Amario, I've been working with um, Ms. Maestas, they're going to also apply. And Ms. Manuelito, who's at Nuka Middle School, they're going to apply. Um, here are some, I know we've already talked about the six key practices. Um, one of the things I did when I first started working here in the summer, I had a little downtime, so I wrote a grant for outdoor learning. Um, and Ojo Amario went to go see Zach Ben and Cudiye, uh, Cudiye at his biddy baby food farm. So that's an example of community related. Curriculum and and rich instruction with science. He talked all about his um, regenerative agriculture and traditional um, agricultural practices and food preparation. Um, he's also going to do Ojo's Family Night and we have more field trips with him lined up and that's the beginning of, I think, a really good partnership. Um, another example of integrated systems of support is that now all the schools get, well, not all of them, but a hundred and eight bags are distributed by the liaisons once a month from Echo Food Bank to all students. And that's just a way to support kids to remove barriers from education. Some of us um, on the leadership and some of our school board members went to some field trips and we saw the Bloom Field Hub. Um, and things like that. So those are examples where we can provide clothing, food, healthcare, counseling, things like that to help kids. To be ready to come to school because um, some families struggle with basic needs. Cultures of safety um, and belonging, Nuka had the Yellow Ribbon Suicide Prevention, anything you can do to help people feel like they can try new things and feel safe in school like. Um, what Mr. Doeswood and his um, data team were talking about. We need to work on all of that and grow that better. Um, powerful student and family engagement, that's something that Janice is doing really well. Um, so for example, um, we just did a big community resource fair at Nuka Middle School. Um, we're doing, I'm working um, with Yaha on Artsy Thursday. The New Mexico Breastfeeding Task Force um, wants to do things in Kirtland. And opening doors with San Juan County Early Childhood Coalition um, as well. Um, I'm also looking at partnering with Food Corps. I'm going to meet with them this week. I think we may have found somebody to help fund that. Um, and so we're just kind of starting all these partnerships and the grant will open, like I said, in April. So Sharon, you can go to the next. Oh, and then down there's the gardens at Nuka Middle School where kids bring in like traditional plants. And Ms. Manuelito has um, upcycled tires, which is cute, um, and painted them. So the power of a full-time, school-based, community, school coordinator. Um, she's providing, she's running their after-school program, Janice is, so. Her schedule, you know, the the idea is that that coordinator can, her schedule could be from ten to six or is that too long of a day? Ten to five. Right, instead of eight to three and open up the building for things after school. She did the shoe game and the cultural night. She hosted all of that. And you know, helped coordinate all the stew and the fry bread. So she's doing the family engagement for the principal um, with her support. She's doing the zumba. And the things like that. She's brought in San Juan College West to do STEM Saturday. So. She's a very powerful asset to have at that school that I would like to see replicated throughout the district. We'll do that through the grant. Grants come and go. So Sharon, if you'll go to the next slide. Um, we've been also building capacity this year. Uh, my understanding from what I've been told is that the PED is going to. Combine for high schools, the Community School Grant with Innovation Zones. When I was told that, I used, I have a little operational fund that I had access to. I am using it to send high school principals and somebody of their choice, uh, usually their college and career readiness person. To the Edu Uprising Conference, which is going to be about capstones, innovation zones, graduate profile. So I'm hoping that we can develop that and then apply for those grants as well from any high schools that are willing and able to do that. I'm going to help write those grants. Um, this spring. And I've been trying to build the capacity and lay the groundwork and share the information and just really. I'm an educator, so I've been trying to educate people about community schools. That's kind of been what I've been trying to do without. Pushing it on people, but just kind of inviting people and sharing ideas. Um, and I know we're all very busy, so I'm so grateful for anybody that's spent time with me and listened to me. Um, you know, kind of talk about this because I'm I'm so excited to share it. So Sharon, if you can go to the next slide. Possibilities for funding. I wish I could come in. I did talk to the people at the Federal Block Grant. That's not available until two thousand twenty-six. I know I've talked to Ann about the um, Twenty First Century Grant. That would also help us, but that's not available yet. But some possibilities are of course, the New Mexico PED Grant, which are the schools that I just talked about. That I'd like to have them apply and I'm open to helping others apply if they'd like. I've written the grant before and I'd be happy to do it again. Um, I'm working with somebody that's trying to apply for a Pinion Digital Equity Grant. Um, and so that hasn't gone through yet, but I'm hopeful. Um, also, I think the best thing to do would be to fund this operationally through. Any kind of funds that you might have access to. I don't know about all of them. I know. We've used um, FII money, the SAG money, title money um, in different experiences that I've had, so. The grants are yearly and they change according like the legislature's meeting right now, so they're going to tell us how much they're going to give, right? Sometimes they give a hundred fifty thousand, sometimes seventy-five thousand. It just depends. It's at the whim of them, so. Whatever I guess our leadership can do to make it operational um, would be ideal. Um, and then also I've been talking to Dr. Begay about perhaps funding somebody through Indian education. You can keep going, Sharon. Thank you. So yeah, Nuka Middle School, like I said, these are the, they do have a dedicated space already. That's the space we utilized for the resource fair. Eva B. Stokely intends to apply and we're in the process of building a site-based leadership team. They already have a really strong PAC apparent. Um, committee. And then Ojo and Kirtland Middle will also apply again and I'm sure they'll get it. And they already are having site-based leadership teams meetings that I'm attending as I'm able. Um, next one. So some future goals. I would love to have stable, reliable fu- funding. Um, grants come and go. Um, in an ideal world, this work would be so important that it would be optimized by um, operational standard funding, which I know funding is hard to come by, but. I think if people saw it as a um, important piece of the work with schools in the community, um, because the community is the child's first teacher. Um, I would love to see one-stop centers, a hub in each of the three regions where families could go to get resources, help. And whatever else they may want. I've heard all kinds of beautiful ideas of like running a cafe, a library, um, a free store. I don't know what the community, zumba, yoga, nutrition classes, whatever they want, right? In Farmington, the one we visited, they're having bicycle club. Children aren't learning how to ride bicycles. Um, so they're going, they bought bicycles and they're teaching the children after school that, you know. Um, how to ride bicycles. So really, I think having three central hubs would be great. They would have clothing, food. And then whatever that region that those families want. Um, we can help find those. And navigators to help connect people with adult education with. I'm working with workforce development. They're the ones that helped me with Nuka Middle School. So I'm really trying to nurture and foster those trusting relationships with outside agencies. Um, and so the site-based school coordinators would provide family engagement after-school opportunities. And I think they would be a really valuable addition to the district that I'm hoping to do through grant funding, but I would love to see some. Uh, you know, decisions made that would help make that operational and sustainable. Uh, thank you so much for your time. Um, I believe that, that's a picture of our field trip there at KMS with Janice, the amazing. Um, coordinator there, but I believe that we can just wrap, you know, kids in all sorts of support and they can all be successful. I truly believe that, that they can all graduate and they can all go on to be college and career ready. There's no reason we can't do that. Um, so thank you for your time and I stand for questions.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Comment.
Go ahead.
If any of the other boards, I know Mr. Wells was there, um, take the time to go visit Kirtland Middle School. It really is impressive and if we can take that and expand that. Throughout, especially in the remote areas, you're talking down south. Uh, Ms. Renner and I have had those conversations about what we've talked about before in the past about. The uh, school being the hub. Um, this really is. The community schools setup really um, models that. To be able to provide those services down south or even just at Ojo. Uh, for a lot of those families who don't have that mobility, but need those services right then and there. Uh, and if. State of New Mexico, Navajo Nation can't provide that, I think the state in conjunction with these other entities can do that because we have the facilities to be able to do that. You know, it's just a matter of developing and building those um, relationships with these entities to do that. And to serve us again, not just the whole child, but the whole family and the community as well. So thank you for what you're doing. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I agree.
Alright, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. Um, J, uh, school year twenty-five, twenty-six academic calendar by Ms. Tell me how you say your name, our, our.
Amron.
Amron. I said it before. Is she here? Is she online?
Yes, good evening, everybody. Um, yata eshe, tanya amron yinche. Uh, I'm here tonight to talk to you about the school year twenty-five, twenty-six academic calendar. Um, before I get into the results of the voting, I want to talk a little bit about how we came to the, to the calendar. So every year when creating a calendar, we have some parameters that we have to work within. Um, like the start and the end date. And so the start date. Not starting before August one and then the end date, having the school year calendar in before Memorial um, in May of that year. Also, we like to plan in a week um, as a break for students and families, a week at Thanksgiving. Two weeks at Christmas and a week at spring break. And then also aligning those dates as best we can with other area schools. Um, we built in two student-led conference days. And the last parameter that we're looking at is the one hundred and eighty-five contract days that the school-based staff have. So once we take all of those factors, build it into a calendar. Um, we, it it looks very, very, very similar to what we have this year. Um, and then we had two calendars that we put out for vote. Um, Calendar A and Calendar B. And the calendars, the only difference in the two calendars was Calendar A. Had President's Day off, which is in February. And Calendar B had um, the first Friday in October off for Shiprock Fair. Um, Sharon, can you go back to the vote? We'll, we'll ju- we'll look at the days here in a moment. So the two calendars went out for vote. It was out for approximately um, a week and a half. And then this is just a breakdown of the two calendars. So as you can see, we had about twelve hundred votes, a little over twelve hundred. Calendar A with five hundred and seventy, Calendar B winning with six hundred and thirty-two votes. Um, we had some community members voting, district and school staff voting, parents and guardians. Um, students and teachers. And that's just a breakdown of the voting right there. And then like I said, Calendar B was the winner and and. We can get into the actual dates on the calendar. Alright, this is Calendar B, which is the winning version. Um, so like I said, we have a hundred and eighty staff days. I'll get into student days in a bit and everybody has that question, but hold it for a moment. Um, as you can see, we're starting with staff, August one. We have three days upfront. Those are the three green days. Those are professional development days. Um, half of that time will be utilized for the districts and and schools to get ready and then the other half of the time is given to the staff to prep classrooms. Uh, to be ready for the students to start. Students would be starting on August sixth, which is a Wednesday. Um, September, we have. a Wednesday. September, we have that holiday, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on holiday, Labor Day, Labor Day off. And then in this version, which is the version that won, in October, we have that first Friday off for the fair. You can see October 13, which is also Columbus Day or Indigenous Peoples' Day. That is a professional development day, a green day. We have a student-led conference on the 24th. In November, we have the Fourth Off, which is an election day, which is a PED mandate. And then we have the week at Thanksgiving. And then jumping into December, two weeks at Christmas. Coming back in January, staff have one day, which is January 5, the Green Day for professional development. Students returning on Tuesday, the 6th. Then January 19, which is Martin Luther King, schools would be closed. February 13 would be a student-led conference. And then the other version, which did not win, had the President's Day off, but this one does not, so students and staff would be attending on President's Day. In March, one week at spring break. Going into April, Good Friday off. April 27 is Navajo Sovereignty Day, so schools being closed on that day. Going down to May, ending on the 22nd before Memorial, and then if needed, there are two snow days to make up. You can also see in the bottom left-hand portion of the calendar, there are the graduation dates. So, I know the burning question everybody has, the 180 student days. Even though the 180 mandate was overturned, we're still going with the 180 student days, and here is why. PED also has a mandate of 1,140 student hours of instruction. And in addition to that, we cannot go below the number of instruction hours that we have currently. So this year, for our elementary students, we have 1,164 hours and 15 minutes of instruction at the elementary, and then at the secondary level, 1,164 hours and 45 minutes of instruction. We cannot go below that. Even though the mandate is 1140 and we're at 1164, we can't go below that. So by time we take those number of hours that we cannot go below, and our student instruction day being at the elementary, six hours and 15 minutes, and then at the secondary, six hours, and I think it's like 20 minutes of instruction per day, we end up having to be at 180 student days, just so that we can meet the mandates of, of the student hours. So now that was a lot of numbers thrown at you. Questions there?
Tanya, on, on this, did we include community?
In the voting, in the creation, no. And simply because, like I said, you know, once we meet all the parameters, there is not a lot of difference. There's not a lot of variety that we can have in a calendar. And so the two versions were created, shown to staff, you know, union, and then we had the two versions, and that was how the community in the voting went out, once the two versions were created.
Was, other than the, there's no, you know, real difference, why was, because in the past, each district or each, on the board, each area, they, they had somebody come from their community to be a part of that calendar. So how come that didn't happen, other than for the reason that you stated?
Really, that's, that's the main reason. You know, we could have brought a bunch of people together, and honestly, I think the, the two versions that went out to vote would look the same. There's not a lot of variety. By time we, you know, we, we meet the parameters and the hours and the days, all of that, you know, there's not a lot that can be done differently. In addition to that, you know, needing to have a calendar approved prior to the budget submissions, which are coming up, or, or finance.
Okay, there, there's, Ms. Low, do you, would you agree on something?
Yes. Did you say that the venue is, the recalcitrations of Friday off for the fair?
Yes.
And then no holidays, even though there is a holiday for February 1, the whole month of, there's no?
President's Day.
The recognition of our community down in Shiprock and in our area, and our whole people, you know, for the Shiprock Fair, but, you know, the whole, the whole aspect of the fair, to the recognition of that, and also for the recalcitrations, all of the day. So those are the two main items that I look for. Tanya, I guess everything else is about the same, same time off, the, the Thanksgiving, winter break, spring break. Okay, well, those are the two main things that I look for in my cell. Friday off in October, Shiprock Fair, and now we're going to be helping.
Okay. The only reason why I'm asking this because she's participated in it, in, in the calendar for my area. So it sounds like she's, she's happy with it, and so, but it, it would have been good to, to, I think that, to, to keep with that tradition, or whatever you may call it, you know, so that they have some input and, you know, from, from, from locally. We keep saying, we, we want to remain local, and let's walk that talk.
And that's Calendar B, just for, yeah, Calendar B.
I, I didn't hear the comment, but I'm glad to hear that, that folks are happy with this version. Yes, I, I agree. We definitely need some local control, some more. And so I think, you know, in, in thinking about the, the PED mandate, so yeah, the, the 180-day requirement is gone, but we still have the 1140. In addition to that, the requirement that we can't go less than what we've had, that really locked us in. So a few years back, when we went to in excess of 1140, like I said, we have 11, 1,164 hours of instruction for students, that really locked us in to the calendar that we have. So thinking back to some of the principal presentations where they're talking about wanting more professional development, they're wanting more green days on the calendar, and that would be great to be able to add in more green days to the calendar, but because we locked ourselves into the 1164 hours, there's just not a lot of variety that, that we could do. You know, some variety that we could add to the calendar. I don't think it would be popular at all, but you know, things like maybe not an entire week at Thanksgiving, or not two full weeks at Christmas. You know, I know that's not popular, but that would allow us some leeway to, to add in fewer student days or more professional development days. So you know, there's, there's that thought.
I, I think some, some, some people would agree to what you just said, and then some would want to remain the traditional others. And, but yeah, I, I think when, when those come forth and say, why, could have, should have, would have type of thing, and at least then we can say we did have, you know, people from our community part of it. But thank you, Tanya. I, I know this is not easy. It's always controversial, and I, I think this is the first year it's going to go through without issues. Thank you.
Excellent. You're welcome. Anybody else have some questions?
Comment.
Yes, go ahead.
So I, I appreciate Ms. Aspas's comments regarding the, including of the community, because it, it not necessarily exact itself as to be a tradition, or it's part of the process. And I liken that to the difference between involvement and engagement. Involvement, you lay something out, and then you invite a few people in saying, this is what we're going to do, and this is how it is. Engagement, again, as with Ms. Low or anybody else from the community, where we've picked people to take part in that process. That's, this calendar is for their children. And I know we're limited on minutes and hours. I get that. That's pretty self-explanatory. But also to Ms. Aspas's point of engaging the community and the parents and the community members in this process is important to them because then they know. Then they can turn around if they're asked and tell the people in the community what they have to deal with, what we have to deal with, what the schools have to deal with, how many minutes, how many hours, how many days. So I have an opinion that we need to engage with the community members as we had in the past. Invite two community members from each of the districts into the district and sit down with them and explain to them, so then they in turn can communicate that with others around them. So it's not a matter of just limiting just because PED or the state or whomever says you only have a certain amount of latitude to deal with. Again, it's their students, their kids, their schools. We need to get them engaged. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. So?
Yeah, I just want to comment. I mean, just looking at the, there's not a lot of difference, but just based on what additions need. I mean, it looks like Calendar B is probably, probably the most practical, and it would also take into account some of the stuff that does happen, like, along, in October. And that would, that would also have the impact of intensity at schools. So, thanks for my comment. Just seems to make more sense.
When will that come?
Thank you. Oh, I'm excited. Do you know, Tanya, Grandma says, "Thank you." Call Grandma back.
Ms. Tanya, did you hear that?
No, I, I, I didn't hear the comment. I heard the laughter.
Ms. Low said to tell you Grandma said, "Thank you."
Yes, yes. Thank you, Grandma. Yeah.
On to the next item, K, Resolution Supporting Letter SB 93. Am I reading the right one? Out-of-School Time Programs by Ms. Cluth Clark and Ms. Benali.
Good evening, everyone. And Jared's going to be a stand-in for Ms. Benali this evening.
Okay.
Hello, everyone.
Hold on just a moment, please.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Yes.
And it's pertinent to the minutes and the hours that we just discussed on, in the calendar. Join the School Board Conference. I got up and spoke because a gentleman from the Finance Department had made comments about the calendar and the minutes and the hours and the days. And, and it was pursuant to the amount of money that the districts are getting and the schools have to spend on quality education and instructional time. Well, I very aptly pointed out that, and he did too, because he, he acknowledged that there's interruptions, because I asked that question about interruptions within that instructional time. And they said they did a study, PE did, did a study, and it, it equates to about 30% of the actual instructional time that's allotted is interruptions in that classroom, whether it's pullouts, specials, or whatever it may be. From their data, 30%. And after he got done, I stood in front of him, and that guy's tall, he's about, like, what, 6'8"? Big guy. Any Hoosies, I said, with all due respect, it's a lot more than that. It's probably about 50% of the time. And Superintendent, I certainly would love for you to canvas our teachers from first through 12, to find out exactly how much absolute instructional time they are getting in their classrooms, minus interruptions, class interruptions from the overhead, minus pullouts, minus specials, everything. And I would dare to say it's probably, they're only getting, maybe on a good day, three to three and a half hours of actual face instructional teaching time. Because again, when they talk about use of that money and the return on investment, when that teaching time is interrupted, how in the world are they supposed to get quality teaching time with three hours or three and a half hours in a day? And then these teachers get held accountable to that. And then it was brought up, and, and we kind of touched on a little bit today about IEPs in the classroom. And I'm not certainly against it, but again, when you have teachers who have a classroom of 16 kids and half those kids have IEPs, again, how does that affect that quality teaching time, see? So, but if, if we can certainly do that, and I would really appreciate that, because that's that kind of information that they need to know. The state legislatures, again, they're putting all this onus on the teachers and the buildings, on the principals, on the school districts, but without the realization of actual teaching time that the teachers are getting.
Well, the data would, the data would speak volumes.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you. Sorry for that.
Comment. Hang on, Jared.
Yes.
In, in, along with what Mr. Montoya is saying, classroom time when all of the students are there. Because when you, when you pull out students for whatever, then they miss out. So, so classroom time when the whole class is, is there is what we ought to be trying to find out.
Technically speaking, if there's a pullout, two, three kids come out, the teacher has to actually stop teaching.
Depends on the teacher.
Technically speaking, they stop teaching.
All right, moving on to K. Mr. Noble.
Madam President, Members of the Board, Superintendent Carlson. I'm going to leave to Ann Cluth Clark. She is online to share a few words before we go into the resolution.
Good evening, everyone. Earlier this evening at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Carlson shared about OST, which right now is being looked at. It's called Senate Bill 93 right now. And we've had some talks about this earlier in the year, how we were, across the state, the OST, the out-of-school time, enrichment time, was drastically reduced. And HDT, the high dosage tutoring, was created and came with a large amount of money and a paradigm shift in how things were, and some rules of how things had to be done, and some more accountability. So the, Erica Benali and I had the opportunity to be invited to the roundhouse at the beginning of the legislative session by OST to talk to leaders and hand out our letters of support for reinstating the amount- And hand out our letters of support for reinsta- reinstating the amount of money. That they had previously given for OST, in addition to keeping the money for high dosage tutoring. So just as a reminder, in previous years, we had um, one million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand for OST. And this year, we had five hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine. So it was a gigantic decrease and schools have been really resilient and had to change their. Way of working, um, and they've been really good at it. The money though, with the one point nine came in the form of high dosage tutoring, sometimes called HDT. And it came with a lot of ball bombs and um, a lot of measurement. So, um, we went in support of asking. Um, everybody we could talk to, Senator Pinto, and we tried to catch Padilla, but he ran from us down the stairs. And um, Senator Solis, and anybody who would listen to us about why it's important. And um, Jared had his chance last week to talk to Senator Padilla. Who was asking for support from the board. So. Do you have any more questions for me about OST, out-of-school time, or high dosage tutoring? Before he talks about his letter of support?
Not necessarily a, a question, but a comment, just to be certain that there's that difference. Difference between the out-of-school and the high dosage tutoring. Two specific programs.
And OST is what we were used to having. And um. Now high dosage tutoring is what we've become used to having. The OST is beneficial. Because it's um, not just linked to reading and math, it can be reading and math. But it can be any sort of enrichment topic. Um, so this year. They've, schools have had to, we wanted to do combination of HDT and OST together. They've had to, at some points, use the quota one funding. The support.
Any other comments or questions?
So. Why not ask for more? We got what, eighteen billion?
Jared, do you remember the number? I'm sorry, I don't remember the number that they're, that the Senate bill is asking for, but Jared might.
Madam President, Femi. Um, we did have uh, our district lawyer, uh, attorney, uh, look over the resolution and she made amendments. To where it also includes language of that the district supports any funding that the lawmakers put in play. Um, for uh, in which we can go ahead and read the resolution um, to. Um, to see if uh, any amendments need to be made or, or how to proceed forward with this.
Because it seems like the trend or it seems like in our best interest to aim high. And then, you know, see what we get. Um, that's why I'm asking. Maybe we need to ask for more, more than that. But I guess the resolution is already created and made and.
A hand raised from uh, Board Attorney Chappelle.
Ms. Chappelle?
Oh, I'm sorry, my voice is, is kind of foggy today. I apologize. I've got a cold, but um. I just wanted to respond to um, the really good question from Board Member Aspas and. Um, the resolution is supporting the amount that is already in Senate Bill ninety-three. Um, and so that's kind of why we stuck to that amount. You're making a really good point about. You know, asking for additional dollars. At this point in the legislative session though, it's probably, it's not budgeted in House Bill two. Um, but we can add language that strengthens um, that we want to see additional funding or more funding than what's in. Um, Senate Bill ninety-three. If that's the pleasure of the board.
Especially when, um, I guess when I'm, I'm looking at, I'm keeping my fingers crossed that. Uh, four corners stays, stays up. But if it doesn't, I don't want to regret. You know, not aiming high. So, um, I think it would be good to add that. Language or, you know, add that on to. Our resolution, just in case.
Uh, yes ma'am, when Jared's finished reading it, I can. Um, we can figure, figure out where in the resolution you want that and I can get that done right away so that. You all can um, sign it and then we can get it sent out.
Ms. Chappelle?
My understanding is it's making its way through the committee process and that's why we wanted to get out in front. My understanding from Mr. Noble is that we wanted to get out in front to support this particular bill.
Okay, if we can make the changes, so we can add. Cause it's on the consent agenda right now.
Okay. So, we did include some demographics. Jared will go through that with you guys and um, I was just worried I would start coughing. So, thank you Jared for reading it.
Continue, please.
All right. Thank you, Madam President, Members of the Board, Superintendent Carlson. Here we go. Uh, Central Consolidated School District Resolution, requesting legislative support for expanded. Funding for educational programs and specifically for Senate Bill ninety-three out-of-school time programming. Whereas, the Central Consolidated School District Board of Education, CCSD, strongly supports. And commends lawmakers for expanding funding for educational programs that provides our students with the academic and social emotional programs. That bridge gaps and provides them with the best opportunity to succeed and live their best lives. Whereas, CCSD is a school board in the Four Corners region of New Mexico. The district is approximately three thousand three hundred square miles and is located primarily on the Navajo Nation. Whereas, the majority of CCSD students live in rural and remote areas and do not have access to out-of-school programs. That students who live in sti- in towns and cities do. Approximately, one-third of our students do not have electricity, running water, indoor plumbing, or internet access. It's estimated that in the remote areas of the district, seventy percent of our students do not have access to these facilities. As a result, in order to support the needs of our communities, CCSD endeavors. To provide community school services that include after-school resources and programs. Whereas, CCSD strongly supports Senate Bill ninety-three, which proposes a twenty million dollar appropriation. To the Public Education Department for statewide out-of-school time OST programming. Whereas, OST is a vital program that supports children, families, and communities. By providing high-quality out-of-school time opportunities that promote academic success, social, emotional development, and equity for all students. Our district has seen firsthand the positive impact of OST programs. And we are actively working to expand and enhance these opportunities for our students. Here are just a few examples of how our schools are currently utilizing OST, oh, elementary school. They are cur- uh, creatively integrating OST and high dosage tutoring, HDT. To provide target, targeted support for students. Contact Lutisia Crisp at. C R I S L at centralschools.org. Next page. So it's uh, Middle School. They offer comprehensive OST and high dosage tutoring programs, both before and after school. Extending learning time and providing extra support. Contact Diane Foster at F O S T D at central. Centralschools.org. Newcombe Elementary School, they focus on enriching OST activities that build foundational skills. And foster a love for, of learning. Contact Herman Gleason at G L E A H at centralschools.org. Curlin Middle School, they combine OST with high dosage tutoring and service learning opportunities, connecting academic growth with real-world application. Contact Denise Denny at D E N N, D E N N G at centralschools.org. Central, Curlin Central High School, they are using OST to support credit recovery and tutoring, helping students stay on track for graduation. Contact Sandra Westbrook at W E S T S at centralschools.org. Whereas, last year, the State of New Mexico Special Appropriation dash final state grant. Slash, two seven four one six, final award FY, uh, fiscal year twenty-three through twenty-four. For CCSD was one, one million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. This important initiative allowed countless programs to thrive and meet the needs of our youth. However, this year's allocation has been reduced significantly to just five hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. An alarming decrease that threatens the sustainability and reach of these programs. Whereas, this sharp reduction is making it difficult, if not impossible, to continue providing essential services to children. And families who rely on OST programs to bridge gaps and ed- in education and social, emotional endeavors. And offer safe, enriching environments outside of school hours. These programs are particularly, particularly crucial. In under-resourced communities like CCSD, where students benefit most from these programs. And whereas, investing in out-of-school time programs is not just an investment in education. It is an investment in the future of our state. Research consistently shows that OST programs improve academic performance, reduce juvenile delinquency, and prepare students for the workforce. Without adequate funding, we risk losing the progress. We have made in leaving many of our children without access to these crucial opportunities. Now, be it resolved, the CCSD Board of Education respectfully requests passage and enactment. Of Senate Bill ninety-three and advocating for restoring and increasing funding for the OST network grant in this year's budget. Be it further resolved, that passage and enactment of Senate Bill ninety-three demonstrates a commitment to supporting our youth. Strengthening our communities and prioritizing the needs of working families across the state.
Any questions or comments? Think it looks good. Just need to add the verbiage.
So I have, I'm sorry, my voice cracked. Sorry about that. I have uh, made that change. And can send it to Jared if that's what you all want me to do. Yeah, that's a lot.
Ms. Chappelle? Make the changes to reflect thirty million?
Okay, yes ma'am.
And if you could add the language that you talked about earlier to increase.
Yes ma'am, um, Sir, I'm sorry, I remember so. Secretary So sent me the language and I've, I've added it and I will send it to Jared.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, Members of the Board, Superintendent Carlson, and guests. Thank you.
Sorry, asthma. Uh, letter L, discussion on bus stop light by Mr. Armenta.
Thank you, Board President Aspas, um, Vice President Wells, Secretary So. Board Member Aspas, Board Member Montoya, Mr. Carlson, thank you for having me. Um, I'm here to discuss the school, uh, the bus light at the non-ride stop. So I think y'all had some questions and I'm here to field whatever questions you might have. And thank you to the community for being here. See some familiar faces and uh, welcome those online as well.
I was mentioning to, oh, may I?
Yes.
I was mentioning to, to um. To Carlson that, that light didn't seem adequate. And, and I, I believe I had that discussion with you too. And, um, and. The property owners are here and um, and then we were trying to figure out whether it was motion or. You know, what type of light it was, but um, yeah, it doesn't seem adequate and. I don't know what. I'm sure there's fixtures out there that, that have a brighter, you know, more lumens.
Right. Well, and, and, and thank you for your, uh, your question, um, Board Member Aspas. I, I was tasked to evaluate the site. We all walked out there as a team. And, and the lows were very helpful in, in, there was multiple areas that were discussed about putting the light up for that particular stop. Um, it was on my understanding that all the components to the structure were gonna be donated. So I really don't know where the light, it, it was given to me to, to put on that pole. And when we seen it, I did think it was a little inadequate. And with the discussion having, we had about the light, I drove by there tonight and it looks like it's dangling on the pole. I don't even look at, it's, it's actually broke. So it's, it's not even mounted right now. So I don't know how long that's been like that and I, I was, it, it was under my assumption that once we, once we donated our time to install it. The actual maintaining in the, in the, the, the maintaining of the light would be up to maybe the chapter or whoever else was gonna be looking. At that, um, that particular light and that pole to illuminate for the kids at that bus stop. Which on my understanding, I believe there's eight children there at that bus stop. Um, but I hadn't had any feedback, in which I'm glad that, that they're, they're, the lows are here and then we can have a discussion about what we need to do. Moving forward with that. Our team is more than happy to install whatever light. Um, I, I do not know where that light came from. And we attached it, I, I know the pole will outlast that light. Because it's on a great base and the pole's secure, but that light, I don't know, it was just, it just. It, it really wasn't what I thought it would be for. But that light, I don't know, it was just, it just, it it really wasn't what I thought it would be for for a long-term a solution to what was happening out there on that bus stop. So I don't know how the placement was when the 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 motion, it was a motion sensing light. Um it did come in the box with a with a remote and you could put it to be on. It was not a dust to dawn sensor. It was just a uh an emotion sensing light. So we set it at that to to be activated when motion did come by, thinking that when the children were there at the bus stop, that it would actually like act come on. But when I was there the night to take some pictures, it was kicking on when the cars were driving by. So it'd go on and off throughout the period through the nighttime, so it'd have enough energy stored through the solar charger to be bright enough in the morning for the children at the stop. That was my understanding. But I did not see it in the morning, so any input that anybody would have, especially the lows that are there and probably see how it was operating, any feedback would be great because up to this point, I really have not had any feedback as to how the light was operating since we installed it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think anybody is to blame, you know, or I'm I'm not looking at anyone to find fault with, I think. Um but it's gone on too long and um you know, this is a safety issue and and the ones that we're trying to take care of are those students that are there. And uh but I think um to even the fixture, I think it was donated and and it was only because it's gone on too long. So um I think the donated fixture was hoping that, you know, things would would that project would be done, would be complete, but um I have drove up to it. The first time it did come on. And after that, I tried it again and it didn't. So that's where um I was talking to Ms. Low and and saying we weren't sure what it was, if it was a timer or motion. And um or maybe if solar and it just went out, you know, the battery went out. But um again, um in in the defense of the chapter, you know, the chapter kept giving reports on it as well, but I kept thinking, how did it end up in the chapter's hands because those are our students. And that's our bus that stops there. So um um I felt like it's it's our responsibility, especially on that on that um heavily traffic road. And right now, I think it's been oh about a good two months now that, you know, there's outage going. And so it's been very busy and the only time it wasn't was when they were putting in that piping. And um and they detoured through in thirty-six. But um since then, it's been, it's been heavy traffic.
And and I totally understand that, Ms. Aspas, and I do, I do think that when the team was assembled, a lot of the people that were there are not a, there was multiple people at that site, that there was people from APS, there were people from the chapter house. And there was, of course, representatives from the school district. We were trying to do our part as far as, you know, what we could, what we could do on our end as far as the construction was concerned um and trying to find the parts. That way we weren't, you know, things that was going on a private property, you know, I know there's rules against that with what the district can do. So we were like, we'll donate our time to actually do the construction of it. But the actual components, as we got them to assemble them. And I don't know whose whose um responsibility. I know APS had talked about getting the light, but then they did not want to maintain it. We wanted to do the the labor and then it was like, who was going to maintain this light? And that's where where ultimately kind of fell through. At the end of them talks, it was just finally discussed that where we were going to install the 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 light itself was on the property inside their gate where the children would be safe, off of the road in a safe area and that they would give them access to their gate, which, you know, we were very thankful for. But there at the end, there was nobody else really present for their meetings. We got the materials up, we had the pole up, we told, we said, hey, we're ready, the pole's up, the bases is mounted, the pole's secure, it's safe, it's not going anywhere, and then I was given the light to install. So what we need to do moving forward, we definitely need another light. And so whatever source we need to do to try to find that, whatever the district needs to do, whoever we can reach out to. And if we get another one, we'll take a lift out there and install whatever light, what preferably something that can last and is uh is a little more durable than what we did have.
And with that, I think um you know, I really wanted to attend a few months back, the um transportation um conference in Albuquerque and and for that reason. And and then, you know, thinking about our roads in in front of Shiprock High and and then also, you know, with this light. You know, I thought, well, maybe they need to hear it firsthand, you know, because um you know, they they need to know that our bus, our buses travel through there. And um and and maybe, and I was really hoping, I I asked superintendent, you know, and I let him know and be aware of that conference and I am and it was short notice and and I it would, it would be nice if somebody could go attend that. And you know, perhaps um you know, start networking, start working with these people and see what 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 is needed. So that, you know, it doesn't become a red tape issue or continue on. What is this, the third year?
Board President, other Vice President, other Secretary, other members, nothing again, Ms. Aspas and um Mr. Montoya. In reply to Ms. Aspas's question, how long this has been going on, I'll just do a quick um history. So you know how long this has been taking. Um back in March twenty twenty-one, Ms. Aspas asked during the school board meeting about the bus stops. And then in September, um she asked, September twenty twenty-first, she asked, uh she brought up the uh bus uh stop again with the heavy traffic. Uh so there's the periods where there's heavy traffic going through there. And then um we anticipate heavier traffic in a couple of years when the chapter and IntuA build that solar facility up on the hill. So and then we even brought it up to their attention to those those people that are involved with that. So in, like I said, in a couple of years, we anticipate more traffic. And then so on uh October, after Ms. Aspas asked those questions, asked that question, then it just made me um um realize, you know, I should, you know, that that the kids need uh uh more um overlooking the kids before my husband and I, we cook breakfast for them before they're our uh grandsons. And we'd stand there on the porch, watch the bus stop and make sure they got on and the other students get on the bus safely at six twelve, twenty-eight, six-thirty, so that at that time, the time varied. And then so after Ms. Aspas asked that question, I thought, oh, yeah, we need, we we need a stoplight, especially with that heavy traffic. Excuse me. So then um I contacted um INTEC and they told me uh it was uh beyond, the time had passed for a request for some assistance. And then so I got referred to APS and then APS APS that they didn't deal with those, they referred me to the chapter. And then I uh talked to the chapter and I attended their meetings and turned in um a request on um have my dates here. Anyway, I uh I think it was on November, yeah, November. And then uh during that time was when um Mr. Benavides was the superintendent. He made a presentation to the chapter. And then that's when I brought up of the um my request to the chapter for the bus slot, uh the street light. And then that um after that meeting was over immediately, then uh Mr. Benavides and I believe it was you two at that time, um that was the assistant. Oh, okay. But but anyway, um so they stopped by the area that I was talking about. And our initial plan was to have the stoplight within our farm area, you know, to avoid all of, go see them, go see them, you know, and have the uh chapter assist us. And then so went to moving the um pole on the outside of our farm boundaries and then that involve uh the state and the nation and the county and, you know, all of these different entities. And then so um that time just um went on and on, so I guess the initial um my initial attempt to um get this going would be back from October twenty twenty-one. And then so and of course, the the chapter said that they would order one and then I even went to the step of um contacting some people that would provide those and I got a quote from them and I turned that in with the paperwork to the chapter. And then time went on and on and then funding and then at 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 some point then I I was told that um the lights that the the chapter had used for their project, the same lights had to be ordered. And the company that it was ordered from had closed down or were moving to a separate site. And then the only place that they would be able to get it would be from Paris, France, and then so that was going to take some time. And then so just, you know, time went on and on. And then at that time, my oldest grandson was um a seventh grader. So, you know, he would start riding the bus and then he graduated last year. And then uh before the uh Mr. Um Armenta and his crew um installed the light, so that was very helpful. Thank you for doing that. You brought the crew in and we talked and then we told them, this is the spot where we want it. And and we had gone off to Albuquerque for that day, then when we came back that evening, we saw the that the um base was on, uh had been put in and the pole was up, but there's no light. And then I cut, I think the following week, the light was up. And then so we kept waiting, kept checking and I thought, okay, it's waiting for some more sunlight to charge up. And then so so but now at uh this point in time, the bus uh comes by at six forty-five, so it's not that dark anymore anymore. Um are we in that time period? But anyway, so the because of the um calendar, you know, the pickup time for the students is no longer at six thirty, six twenty-eight anymore. It's now moved up to uh six forty-five. So it's slightly dark, but not that dark. So um and then, like you said, there was the light was dangling and then so we're just having our fingers crossed that, you know, with with the district's help. And thank you for Ms. Aspas for making that statement. That is, it is the school's responsibility. At first I I thought, okay, now who do, who do I ask, who do I turn to? But at this, um so thank you for making that statement. And then so um I think that's all I have. So um thank you. And then um we'll get it resolved one way or another. So I guess I'll call, I'll call the chapter house again and talk to Mr. Begay over there.
My presentation partner here, I want to thank you very much for your input because I, from the district standpoint, we want to make it right. We do. And we, we deal a lot with a bunch of different entities and if if we can put it out there to, for somebody to donate, we would be happy to install it. We just cannot do it ourselves because of the, it being on private property. So we, we will do our due diligence. If we need to reassemble our team and if we need to get back and meet with the original ones from the chapter and whoever we need to to get the proper light, we will install it. Um uh we just need to get somebody that that we can, and 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 like I say, we deal with a lot of different entities that maybe somebody would we would be willing to to donate. I know we have a a lot of the lights around the housing up at Ojo that the BIA uses. And I know when we built our our homes around the Shiprock area, we have some some automatic streetlights that kick on in the new homes and they were nice. Maybe something like that. Maybe we can reach out and find somebody that would be willing to to help us out, to be able to make it safe for the district. I believe that from the district standpoint, that beings that is on their property, we have to be careful from from actually us buying it and putting it in there, but we could install it as as we will donate our labor.
Superintendent, can you look into this, make sure there's a, an action plan that's set up that we have a definite plan on resolving this?
Yes, I got a comment.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Don't they say sometimes it's easier to beg for forgiveness than it is for permission? Just put the damn light up. Serious, I mean, twenty twenty-one, really? They said you can use the land, little four-by-four area with the post and a damn light. Good God. You have to take a light off the Eiffel Tower or what? I mean, that's ridiculous. And I and I'm not beating up anybody here, I'm just saying the bureaucracy, the bureaucracy that is created by human beings. It's kind of what I complained about down in in Santa Fe over the weekend. We get in our own damn way. It's a light, for God's sakes. They sell them at Home Depot. I'll go buy one. Seriously, at Home Depot, they sell them.
Well, we're in, we're in the same boat, Mr. Montoya, and thank you for that because we, when I seen it, I I showed Mr. Carlson, so this is hidden. And that was what was given to us. So I'm in the same boat. We want to get it done. We we, we don't install, you know, we in in our school district, we don't install install junk. We want to make sure it's it's good. And so we want to make sure that we put something worth, worth having up there and that's going to last. And something that is, whoever's going to maintain it, what, we could figure that out, but as long as it's there and 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 get something that's a little bit maintenance-free, but will endure the wind, the weather, and something that'll be sustainable. So um I know that with Mr. Carlson, we will, we will get a plan together for sure and get that. Because the pole's there, it, the 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 structure's there, we just got to get a good light for it to install and we'll be done. Go ahead.
Uh thank you for um having this topic on um the agenda for the school board. And it's not just academics, you know, for the children. Um we talk about homes, we talk about safety, how how the children will learn. So all of this, this topic is is part of that too, not just for my children in the neighborhood, but for children, especially in our area on our reservation. Um Newcombe, Shiprock, you know, farm roads and then roads out and towards Ojo farm areas, bus stops there, are the bus stops safe for the students, especially, you know, so early in the morning, traffic and all of that. So thank you for um discuss, making uh discussing that. And we'll, we'll all try to find a resolution of for for this. So yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Low.
Yes.
Thank you.
And Superintendent, can you keep us um informed about the progress on this so that it doesn't get pushed to the wayside again? Thank you, thank you. Um we'll move on to AM Indian policies and procedures. IPP revised per district legal advisement by Dr. Begay.
Although um yet at board president, although um board the superintendent, Mr. Carlson. Um this evening, um the IPP that is um currently on the attachment is a revised one from the one that you had um previously. Um it was up for um discussion and um approval back in um January. So um there's um revisions that were made, really slight revisions that were done by um the legal person um for the district. And a lot of the revisions are just um punctuations and um adding the word the school to the. punctuations and, um, adding the word the school to the word board throughout the whole, um, document. So this right here is the revised, um, document after, um, those were, um, made. And I stand for questions.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Continue, please. Is that it?
I could have.
Machine.
Yeah.
Oh. In utility comparison report by Ms. Ellison. Ms. Ellison, are you online? Is she online?
She was.
We can't hear her. She's talking, but she, we can't hear her.
Yeah.
Oh, you guys.
She was muted. Go ahead, Ms. Ellison.
Okay, am I unmuted now?
We can hear you.
Okay, all right then. Uh, good evening, board members, um, superintendent Carlson. I am going to be presenting the finance reports, but I'd also like to have the opportunity to introduce our finance director, Mr. Satania. If you could introduce yourself, please.
Hello, hello, Madam President, uh, Board of Directors and Superintendent Carles, Carlson. My name is Dominic Satania. I'm the new Director of Finance for Central Consolidated School District. Um, I grew up in Bloomfield, New Mexico. Brief introduction, I grew up in Bloomfield, New Mexico. I've been in New Mexico my whole, whole life. Um, my mother's family is from Blanco, New Mexico and is Hispanic tradition. Uh, my dad is, uh, from Italian heritage and also grew up in Bloomfield. I come from a long tradition of, of educators and administrators and coaches in the Four Corners area. And my background, uh, and I was educated at UNM for both my undergrad and graduate. My background, uh, I have an MBA and also a Bachelor of Arts in Architecture. And, uh, most recently I just left the investment management industry after practicing there, uh, for the last ten years and living and working in Santa Fe, New Mexico. And that's a little bit about me and I'm just really excited to be here. Um, I'm on day seventeen of working for the district. It's been quite a whirlwind of, uh, trying to catch up and get educated about all the facets of the organization and the budget. I'm relying right now on, on Herbie Ellison to, uh, present to you this evening. And the plan is by, uh, the next board meeting, uh, in one month, I will be presenting and Herbie will taking in, be taking a step back. Um, I want to acknowledge Herbie and Christie in our department for carrying the finance department over these many months. Um, they've been doing a, a good job and, uh, and I'm really excited to be working with them and the rest of the school district and supporting the boards, boards' goals with, uh, the superintendent. So it's very nice to meet all of you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Sharon, can you share the utility comparison, the summary report?
Okay, uh, so for the summary report, we have our year-to-date expenditure for December. I'm sorry, um, it's supposed to be January twenty twenty four. Um, six hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. And then for twenty twenty-three, total spent was seven hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-two cents. Out of, um, impact aid for the current year, total spent was six hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-five cents. Um, at the bottom of the report, we have the five-year, um, trend. So as of January, um, our year-to-date for the current school year is three point four million. So we're just a little bit less, um, on this from last year at three point eight. Do I have any questions for the utility report?
No questions, please continue.
Thank you. Okay, on the next report, um, is going to be our procurement reports. Our POs over sixty thousand. We had one purchased order to CES. And this is for the district-wide fire alarm inspection. Total dollar amount is eighty thousand and twenty-three dollars. Um, let's see, this is for the operations and maintenance department. Do I have any questions?
No questions, continue.
Okay, thank you. Uh, purchase orders, next report, purchase orders, um, thirty-five hundred to ten thousand dollars. We have a total of fifteen purchase orders that were issued in January. Okay, thank you. Uh, next report is going to be the board summary report. Okay. Uh, if you back out to the main menu, it'll be the, the board summaries. It should be the last, uh, attachment. Yes. Okay, for our total accounts payable disbursements for the month of January, um, we had one point nine million out of the operational. Our year-to-date is eighteen point two million. Our activities accounts, we had thirty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars for the month of January. Total year-to-date, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and five dollars. Our outstanding checks for the month of January, total five hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars. Year-to-date outstanding is six hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars. On our activity side, we had fourteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Year-to-date outstanding is eighteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-two. Our expenditure reports for general funds, our grand total was seven point one million. Of that amount was one point eight for impact aid, fifteen one hundred. And then add valorum, one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. Year-to-date for general funds, grand total forty-seven million, six hundred and nineteen thousand. Impact aid, year-to-date, fifteen million, five hundred and sixteen thousand. Year-to-date for add valorum, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars. Our grant funds, one point four million grand total for expenditures. Year-to-date, ten million, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand. Carl Perkins, six thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars. We don't have anything for Fund Two, Four, One, Seven, Six. JOM, our total expenditures was thirty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. Impact aid sped forty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Impact aid, Indian Ed, five hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Year-to-date Carl Perkins, thirty-six thousand. Fund Two, Four, One, Seven, Six, four point, or four thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars. JOM, year-to-date, one hundred and eighty thousand. Impact aid sped, year-to-date, two hundred and forty-nine thousand. Impact aid, Indian Ed, three point two million. Letter C, we have our capital outlay expenditures, total dollar amount, two hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars. And then our, um, total was seven point six million. Of this amount, our year-to-date for, um, impact aid, capital outlay is forty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Number four, revenue. General funds, total dollar amount for the month of January, six million, sixty-three thousand dollars received. Total year-to-date, fifty-three point seven million. Um, no change in our operational impact date since last month. Add valorum, we received a hundred and eighty-six thousand, five seventy-nine. Totally receive year-to-date, two hundred and five thousand, two eighty. And then grant funds. We received eight hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and fifteen for the month of January. Total year-to-date, sixteen point nine million. We didn't receive anything in January for Carl Perkins, JOM, our impact aid. Capital outlay, total dollar amount received is three point two million. Total year-to-date is three point six. And then we have eleven bars this month for approval. We have line one, a transfer bar for Fund Two, Four, One, Oh, Six. Total dollar amount is zero dollars and it was to transfer to cover expenditures for salaries. We have a maintenance bar, line two. Two, Four, One, Oh, Six, zero dollars, transfer to cover expenditures for salaries. Line three, a transfer bar, Fund Two, Four, One, Oh, Nine. Zero dollars, transfer to cover expenditures for salaries. Line four, Fund Two, Four, One, Seven, Four, Carl Perkins, dollar amount, five thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars. And this is for the final award for the current school year. Line five, Fund Two, Four, Three, Three, Zero. Zero dollars, transfer to cover expenditures for the current school year. Line six, Fund Two, Five, One, Eight, Four. Total dollar amount, four hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars. This is for the current year allocation and obligated funds. Line seven, Two, Seven, One, Eight, Three. Total dollar amount, thirty-four thousand, six twenty-six. And this is the award for the current school year. Line eight, Fund Two, Seven, Four, Zero, Seven, Zero Dollars. Transfer to cover, um, family night event at Newcom Elementary School. Line nine, Fund Two, Seven, Five, One, Six. Total dollar amount, twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And this is for the FY twenty-four, twenty-five award. Line ten, Fund Two, Seven, Five, Three, Six. Thirty-three thou, or thirty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And this is, um, for the summer literacy transportation program. Line eleven, Fund Two, Nine, One, Zero, Two. And this is for KMS Robotics for eight hundred dollars. Do I have any questions?
Go ahead. I'm just asking this question because we, we, um, during the conference, um, the commissioner for public lands had, um, spoke. And I'm wondering, in, in this whole, um, risk of revenue, do we see that or do you see that? Public lands, any money coming from there? I'm just wondering, yes, no?
Um, not that I've seen. The only thing that we get related to public lands is just going to be the tax, the tax levy from the public, um, from the, um, the add valorum portion.
Yeah, that's what I asked about, you know, if it was the add valorum, she said no.
Okay, yeah, that's the only one that I know that we do receive related to, to land.
And I was wondering, you know, if we do see anything because since a large part of our district is on reservation.
Um, in terms of land or in terms of the tax levy?
Uh, land and I, I don't think we have much of tax.
On the property tax, we do, we do continue to see some on the tax, um, the property tax. Um, but I can double check and we can double check on that land question. But, um, to my recollection, we don't have anything that we received from the public lands. The only thing we get like from San Juan County would be the one that's for their property tax.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh huh, thank you.
Uh, just real quick, um, has, just, uh, any delays in processing of any collateral? Whether it's Title One, Title Two, Title Three, or, or you?
No, not at this time. Um, we are receiving our RFRs, we are receiving our RFR payments and, and our RFRs are being processed. So I have, we have not seen a delay. Okay, yeah, we'll continue to monitor that. We'll continue to monitor when, um, we do receive the payments for the grants. And you said it was, your question was specific to Title Three?
Yeah, all, all the collateral.
Okay, all the formula, okay. Yeah, we'll continue to monitor and watch that. But as of, um, as of January and then also with our bars that we submitted, we've been, they've been there being, um, reviewed and processed timely.
Please continue, thank you.
Okay, um, that was the last of the reports for the finance portion.
For Q?
Um, for Q, those were the bars.
Oh, okay.
We, yeah, we went over the bars.
Okay. And, uh, before I'd be remiss if I didn't say this, but welcome aboard, Mr. Estegni, Esteg, Estegner. Sorry, Satania, sorry. I'm really butchering your name. It's even written right in front of me too.
That's okay. It's, uh, Sat, Satania, Satania.
And I was just told that your father might have been the coach for Bloomfield High School?
Yes, Philip Satania was my, is my father. He was a track coach for many years. Uh, this is his first year, I think in over fifty years where he has, he, it's his first year not coaching. He's been coaching track for, forever.
Great, well, welcome aboard, welcome, day seventeen.
Thank you very much, yes, day seventeen and counting.
Thank you. Is there anything else, Ms. Ellison?
No, that's it. That concludes our reports.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, number five, review consent items below and pull items from consent agenda for discussion and or approval. A possible item removed from consent agenda. Are there any items? Sharon, did you get that? It was motion, it was motion by board member, so second by, or secretary. Board member So, second by, or Secretary So, and seconded by Board Member Montoya. Board Member Mon- Montoya, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Aspis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mister So, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mister Wells, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Seven request item, uh action items or reports for next meeting. A possible items for next meeting.
I don't, I don't know if um he can get it done in time, but that request I made on canvassing the teachers and the schools on. Actual instructional time. I'd certainly like to know that, because that that matters when our teachers are held accountable.
Ms. Aspis?
I'll, I'll call again.
Mister So? Mister Wells?
Yes, I appreciated the presentations, uh. Uh the elementary schools. And. Would like to hear uh those from Shiprock area and Newcom area as well, the next meeting.
Shipro- Shiprock's next, and then Newcom after that.
Never mind.
I did have something, but I don't remember where I wrote it down, so I have to come back to you. Somewhere I wrote it down, I don't remember my, all my chicken scratch here, yeah, my notes, so. I won't, um I'll email you um when I come across it. I just can't remember right now. Alright, eight uh plus deltas. Mister Montoya?
I have none.
Ms. Aspis? Mister So? Mister Wells?
Yeah, plus, uh I I particularly enjoyed the presentations of the. Elementary schools tonight. I commend Ms. Aspis for requesting that. It was very informative and. And I really appreciate it. No delta.
And I also, I I I think it was a really good presentation to hear about all the. Elementary schools in this area, and I look forward to hearing more. And thank you for everybody who stayed all the way till the very end. And um I don't have another. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Is that the last part? Okay, but motion by um Mister So, second by Mister Wells. Um Mister Montoya? How do you vote?
Ah, do I wanna leave? Yes.
Ms. Aspis?
Yes.
Mister So? Mister Wells?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.